Thank you all being here with us tonight. For the record, it is Tuesday, October 2nd. It's two minutes after six. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Burnt?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Mayor DeVeard?
Here.
And Councilmember Cavanagh is absent.
Okay, item number two is a pledge of allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Pastor Michael Pearson with the Seventh Day Adventist Church. If you will all join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you for joining us.
Eternal Father, we want to thank you tonight for your faithfulness, for your sustaining grace. And so we pause for just a few moments to ask for divine wisdom to consider you in all our deliberations this evening, that we might have compassion and grace towards each other. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Michael. Item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
A couple of minor changes on item nine C. When we get to it, the applicant's requested not to be continued to November 7th, so we'll address that when we get to it. And then item 10A is an update on Lime Bike. Nobody's heard Lime Bike has arrived in the community. And we thought we had a full crowd, so it's okay. We move item 10A to perhaps item eight B, so we can get a brief update on Lime Bike, what's happening, what's getting fixed, while captive public can enjoy that as well. So with those two changes, Madam Mayor, I'd move we adopt the agenda.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. As change, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Mr. Clerk, anything under five?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have several individuals signed up. However, all of them indicate the discussion topic, which is later on your agenda, which is nine E, the public hearing for Hawaii High School. So other than that, there's nothing other than the Hawaii High School discussion.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, if you'll make sure that they're included under that item, that would be great. Thank you. Okay, item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
There were no changes to the consent agenda as published, so I would move that the consent agenda be approved and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move to eight A. Under community presentations, tonight we have the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council here, both our Chair and Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council for having us. I'm Ben Hutchins, Vice Chair.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, my name is Logan Denon, and I am the Chair of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. All right, so we're going to start talking about our leadership training in August and the theme that we have created for our whole year this year. So August 3rd and 4th, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council met together to create kind of our plan for the entirety of the year. We wanted to create a more streamlined idea for what we wanted to do, because we felt it was more important to have a singular idea rather than each subcommittee breaking off and kind of not creating a succinct group. And so our theme that we created for this year was MIAC Gets Talking. And our plan with this was kind of talking about mental health, homelessness, those who are hungry, stuff like that, things that a lot of people think are not usually talked about, have a lot of stigma behind it. So yeah, we felt like the point of MIAC Gets Talking was really going to help us to become better presenters in front of the community and make us look better.
Next, we have introductions of this year's Executive Council. This year, as our Chair is Logan Denon. I am the Vice Chair, Ben Hutchins. Katrin Neely is our Secretary. Abby Hutchins is our Social Coordinator. Jared Gonzalez is our Communications Coordinator. Britten Davis is our Government Affairs Chair. Shannon Thomas is our Teen Activities Committee Chair. Colton Hawkins is our Community Service Chair. Amber Graves is our Government Affairs Vice Chair. Jelena Corsi is our Teen Activities Committee Vice Chair. Erin Fuhrman is our Community Service Vice Chair. Chloe Robbins is our Renaissance Ambassador. Jacob Francis is our At-Large Ambassador. Courtney McBride is our Meridian Ambassador. Sidney Fisher is our Rocky Mountain Ambassador. Jackson Jones is our At-Large Co-Ambassador. Warren Johnson is our Mountain View Ambassador. And our advisors this year are Dom Gallo Somino as our Government Affairs Advisor, Jody St. Martin as our Lead MIAC Advisor, Renee White as our Teen Activities Committee Advisor, Macy Snellson as our Community Service Advisor, Ashlyn Miller as our Community Service Advisor, Stephanie Galb Wraith as our Community Service Advisor. And this year, we also have participation with our Youth on Commissions. Jackson Jones is on our Parks and Recreation. Courtney McBride is with the Historical Preservation, and Charlene Peterson is with Transportation. This year, our first meeting was headed up by our kickoff event, where we had over 100 people in attendance. At that meeting, we introduced our new Executive Council, and we reviewed what MIAC was, what we stand for, and got everybody comfortable with each other.
This year, we have around 16 schools that are represented in MIAC, as well as several that are homeschooled, ranging from Central Academy to Renaissance, Rocky Mountain, and all of those you can see on your screen. And then our first big event that was led by our Teen Activities Committee was our movie night. We went to the family movie night in... What park was that?
Settlers Park.
Settlers Park, that's right. There were about 20 youth that were there. It was a really great point for a lot of newcomers and a lot of people who have been a part of MIAC for a long time to kind of meet each other, socialize, and get comfortable with the new Executive Council. It was a really great event.
Next was our Dutch Bros CPR Day, which was a great success this year. We had four locations that we went to for four hours. We had a participation of 42 MIACers. We had four advisors, and we trained 553 people. And it was our best year yet, actually. With less time than last year, we trained more people than ever.
And it was much warmer.
It was much warmer this year, absolutely.
All right, and our most recent event was the Treasure Valley Youth Safety Summit. This is an event that we do every year. We take a bunch of high school students to Wahoos for the day, and we do a lot of safety training. We have the Meridian Police Department come and do some texting and driving on the go-karts. They help us with impaired goggles on mini golf. And then they did some bullying simulation on the laser tag. We had some really great guest speakers, too. We had Matt McCarter come and talk to us about positivity, suicide prevention, stuff like that. We had the Meridian Anti-Drug Coalition come and talk to us about how we can help prevent drug use in our schools and how to get involved with that. We had the Idaho Transportation Department come, and they did kind of like a Family Feud style game where they showed us a bunch of information about driving and how to be safe on the roads and some statistics that were picked up by the youth easier than just a presentation showing them statistics. And then I was also able to present about what Renaissance did last year. Every year, the... Well, last year, we started the toolkit for the Treasure Valley Safety Summit, which pushed students to get involved in the school and push the safety things that we learn in the Safety Summit to go back to our schools. Renaissance was the overall champion of pushing that. And so we got to present about all the awesome things that Renaissance had the chance to do. We talked about our Suicide Prevention and Kindness Movement. So that was really impressive. We had some really great vendors, too. We had Idaho Central Credit Union, the Community Kindness Movement, and a bunch of other really awesome people that came and support this great event.
Our next event was the Farmstead, where we had 54 people come, and we all socialized and just had a really fun time. And then next was our Middle School Safety Summit. This stemmed from us having such a successful high school safety summit. It was the first year that we've done this. We had two guests, three guest speakers. Officer Gomez, he spoke about internet safety. And then we had Officer Gorza and Ellis present on personal safety.
And then our upcoming event that we have is getting involved with the Meridian Chunk or Treat, which is planned for October 25th, and we're expecting a really big turnout, because last year, we got a lot of people involved, and we're hoping to have even more MIACers get involved this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Not a question, but a comment. Good job, guys. Awesome. As always, you have our 100% support. Continue with the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As related to the toolkit, can you give us an idea of some of the topics that were brought up and maybe a couple of examples of strategies that might go back to the high schools?
Well, one of the big ones that Renaissance did was our kindness stuff. Last year, we put together 800 Valentine's Day cards and put candies in each one of them, and we passed them out to every single student in the school. Our focus was just spreading kindness on a day where some people don't always feel the happiest. We just wanted to make sure that everyone was feeling loved, that everyone felt supported. So that was really our big thing last year. I know that other schools have gotten involved with their Red Ribbon Week, other things like that. Yeah, Renaissance was really focused on the kindness part of it.
Yeah, and North Star, I was the At-Large Ambassador last year, Co-Ambassador, and we focused on Do the Right Day especially as well, where we made hundreds of cards that we put in everybody's lockers with compliments, and we just tried to bring everybody together in one day and make everybody do something good.
Very good. Well, thank you for all you're doing, and we look forward to your monthly reports.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, City Council.
Okay, our second item under community items presentations was removed or moved forward. It was 10A on the regular agenda. It's our community development update on bike share programs. So who's up first?
Who's up first?
I think I've been voluntold to be the spokesperson on this, I guess, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of the council, so we've had some concerns raised in the community regarding the Lime Bike program. Myself, Robert Simison from the Mayor's Office have had a couple of conversations with the Lime Bike folks about these concerns, and I could point out a few of them we thought we want to bring to your attention and seek some direction. When this program was initially proposed to the city, they did want to enter into a licensing agreement with the city, and they have. But there were some things that were stated and committed to and proposed at that time that were incorporated into the agreement. And some of them were things like there was a quote made at one of the meetings, "We try to do a lot of education upfront any time that we launch." They said they would start with a number of about 200, about half of them to be scooters and half of them to be bikes. There was a six-week rollout period to get these out into the community. It says, "Before we launch, we'd like to get in touch with places like The Village, make sure everyone is aware. They wouldn't want to deploy bikes there without business owners or business operators knowing." They said that they want to make sure it was really going to be successful when we do launch, so if there's anything, any concerns from any of the communities, we would be okay to delay that if needed, to make sure that, you know, all of it comes together in a nice way. And there was a quote from Councilmember Cavanagh saying, "Support from the Highway District is, obviously, I think, a key, because it's their roadway." The other piece that I would be interested to know about, and we talked about in the Transportation Commission, is the feedback from our school districts. They're obviously a very large partner with our community and make sure this isn't something that they feel now have to figure out and adjust and support. To me, that would be really beneficial to know where, know that when I want to make a decision. And their response was absolutely. So we incorporated some of those things into our agreement with Lime, and now they're called Lime, they were Lime Bike. And they were required to abide by all city, county, and state laws, ordinances, any rules and requirements that would be put in place. They could use city property to operate these, as long as it didn't adversely affect city property, didn't adversely affect the property of any third parties, didn't inhibit pedestrian or vehicular movement within the city and public rights away, and not create any conditions that are a threat to public safety or security. The city at its own discretion could support the bike sharing program by helping them with either installing bike racks or painted locations for parking of these bikes, and then also working with... And then we could work with them with other private entities to help find locations to park these safely. Also, the city is supposed to have its own unlock code, so that if they are placed improperly, the city could remove them immediately if they're blocking driveways, sidewalks, handicap, ADA access points, things like that. And then Lime was to secure all their licenses necessary, like with ACHD, prior to operation. As of today, they haven't done any of those things. And that's been the concern we've expressed to them, that they had made these commitments in our agreement to do those things, and they haven't done that. And the complaints that the city has been receiving, in light of that, have been exactly what these were meant to address. They're being parked by the people, leaving them out from Lime to rent on sidewalks, obstructing pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk, obstructing ADA access on sidewalks in front of businesses that didn't want them on their property. The first day they launched this, last Thursday, the 27th, The Village made contact with the city, because they were taking them there. Again, no permission, no contact, no discussion with them previously. We met today with ACHD. They do not have a license agreement. They talked to ACHD twice this year, very early on, approximately the same time they spoke with the city, and then came back in August, never engaged ACHD with any type of discussion about an agreement. They did engage today after our conversation. ACHD reached out back to them. So we're seeing a lot of issues that we tried to address in our agreement upfront, and we've asked Lime to pause on continuing this rollout until they commit to doing the things and do the things they actually had said they would, and that our agreement contemplated upfront. You can't park these on the sidewalk, and you can't drive them on the sidewalk, and that's where they seem to be ending up. We're very concerned about disability access on our streets and sidewalks. Again, same thing in the parks. We have received a number of complaints in the parks about bad behavior, and I recognize that they don't completely control the behavior of people that rent these devices, but without any public education or outreach, again, there's a concern out there in how they're being used, and then again, where they're being left. I know we've had a number of internal conversations. I know Chief Lady has been a part of those, and Lieutenant Coliani, so the police have their own opinions about trying to deal with these. ACHD has been removing them. If they see them while they're out and about doing their business, and they find them to be obstructing sidewalks or obstructing disability access points, they will just remove them and take them. When we met today with ITD, ITD said, again, they don't prohibit them on the roadway, but if they're left on the roadway or adjacent to their roadway, they will remove them as well. So again, we wanted to make this successful. I think from the staff side, we've tried to work with Lime to make them successful, and we've been getting resistance or really noncommittal on trying to get these things accomplished. They have agreed to a lower rollout, but again, some of these other issues still haven't gone away. And so we do have some concerns and wanted to both make you all aware of it and then also seek your direction, what you would like us to do. I know there's a Lime representative in the audience as well tonight, if you wanted to hear from him. Those are... Most of the concerns, I don't know if the police have additional ones they'd like to add, but I think I've covered a majority of the ones that we received, both at my office as well as the Mayor's Office.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, I just want to mention that after Lime came to town, I signed up as a contractor with Lime to pick up, charge overnight, and redeploy their scooters. So given that, I'm happy to be a resource for information as to the processes and whatnot, but I'm going to stay out of any conversation about whether to exercise any of the provisions of the MOU or anything like that.
Thank you. Chief, did you want to add anything?
Madam Mayor, council, I do have a few other words to add. Since Thursday morning, Lime has been the topic of our conversations and has been inundating us with complaints. It has been an absolute chaotic nightmare. The frustrating thing for me is that no one reached out to the police department and said, "Hey, what sort of impact would this have on our city, or what would be unintended consequences?" Or even ask what the legal requirements were for this. 11/27 on September 27th, we get a phone call, voicemail from Lime that says, "Hey, I'd like to introduce myself and talk to you about the Lime program that they just implemented three and a half hours ago." We have been chasing Lime complaints on abandoned property, vandalism, broken Lime scooters, Lime scooter races, Lime scooter races in our parks, inundated with complaints about Lime scooters in Settlers Park, in Kleiner Park. I don't even want to talk about the complaints we got from The Village. He was quite frustrated. Just yesterday, we got another complaint where someone was trying to sell a Lime Bike I went back and read the council amendments from March 27th. Everything that was mentioned to us, everything that was promised to us, has not happened We need to do something. We need to... Well, my opinion is we need to do a cease and desist, and we need to stop, and we need to educate Lime about what they legally can and can't do. We need to educate our citizens what they can and can't do, what the expectations are. Because even today, when we were having a discussion about talking about where you can deploy these scooters or bikes, is only half the problem. The other half of the problem is where people are leaving them. This was very mixed up in how it was deployed, very chaotic how it was deployed. And the police department is absolutely opposed to it currently as it stands. Now, we're not opposed to the ride sharing. We think it's an interesting concept, but boy, it sure started off on the wrong foot, and it soured a lot of people in this community. So I stand for any questions, but yes, I did have some additional comments.
Well, it's a good thing you didn't have a real opinion on this. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor. Chief, so a cease and desist, and then what? How much time would you foresee needed to roll this out correctly if we could stop? Because it sounds like a pause is not going to work for our already overworked and understaffed police.
You know, I... Madam Mayor, Councilman Little Roberts, I don't know if I can estimate a timeline. I think you just got to get people in a room, and you need to have that dialogue, and that you have to take action upon what that dialogue is, and that cease and desist or that redeployment has to be longer than three days. You have to get people in a room to sit and talk about what the expectations are, what the marketing plan's going to be, and then you have to educate the public. And that doesn't take a whole lot of time, but it takes everybody in the room to discuss it and to put that information out. I know that there's been a lot of misinformation out there about what they can and can't do with them, about who can and can't ride them. And that information needs to be given to our citizens, so we know what to expect. I think it's a really cool concept, but currently, it is not working in this city.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Mylum.
Chief, since you just went through the minutes recently, I recall very clearly when we were having this conversation with Lime, to that they would come up with a real basic list of exactly what you just said, who can ride, how to ride, where to ride. And that was supposed to be part of either the signup or when you went to rent the vehicle, it would show the rider that right there, so that they would have some kind of idea. And I haven't ridden one. Is that there? Councilmember Palmer?
Madam Mayor, yeah. As soon as you sign up, there's a thing that says, "You have to be 18, you have to wear a helmet, you can't ride on the sidewalk." There's a whole list of things, obviously. You can ignore them, but they're there.
And I understand that Lime Bike is not the only program out there, and if we want to do this, we want to do it right. Certainly, I think there was a lot of support from this council in the concept and a real interest and willingness to work with Lime to roll out their program, but we haven't really had very good communication.
Madam Mayor, I guess that's a perfect example, is that we use Lime Bike because Lime Bike are here. Actually, they're the Lime scooters, but Lime Bike is here. It's the concept, it's not necessarily the company. And so I don't want to direct all of that toward Lime Bike. However, how it was deployed does go directly to the company. Perfect example on the helmet, no one's going to take a helmet to rent these. No one carries that helmet around on the sidewalk with them. And there's no legal requirement that requires them to have a helmet, it's a company policy. So I think they put that in there to try to minimize liability, but there's no legal requirement that they have to have a helmet.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Chief, maybe not no one, there might just be one guy that randomly just carries a helmet around with him to council meetings and... Sorry.
Was that a question?
No. I'm letting you know, there is one. He said no one, and there's one.
Yes, I'm not saying that...
He's here.
The one guy.
He's probably from Lime, too.
Yeah. One out of 600,000 in the valley, he has it. Thank you for pointing that out.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Madam Mayor, thanks, Chief. I'm just more of a comment. I'm actually really surprised and almost floored that they didn't contact ACHD. That's actually pretty surprising. I mean, I don't see how they could continue without an agreement with, or at least some type of licensing agreement or MOU or something with ACHD. How do they expect to ride on the roads? They don't even talk to the guys who own the roads.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burnt, it's unique, or that's a good question. We're a little unique because of the Highway District. We don't control our sidewalks.
Oh, exactly.
We have some control of the sidewalks, some policing of the sidewalks, but yeah, it's controlled by ACHD. So it makes it a little bit more unique in this area than it may have perhaps across the United States. But yeah, there's been some serious complaints, ADA complaints, and I can tell you, that's one area you do not want to mess with. If they're blocking the sidewalks for any way whatsoever, they need to be immediately removed, because Title VI violations are not fun. And it also affects any grants that any entity gets if we get those complaints against us.
Madam Mayor, follow up. I, you know, in... When they first came and presented to us, I was actually quite supportive. I think it's an interesting concept. I hope that we can get, you know, the local stakeholders together so we can figure this out, maybe learn what we did wrong and what they did wrong, and then when they come back, maybe in the spring or when it gets a little bit warmer again, we can do a better job with it. But there has to be something we can do to make it so that it works for everyone, because there are some complaints, but I believe there's some folks that are having some fun with them, so... And we have to strike a balance somehow, in my opinion.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burnt, I guess the last thing I ever want to do is create more laws and create more ordinances, but if you don't have an ordinance guiding this, then they make their own rules, and we see what happens then.
Council, it sounds like that Lime has a repres- Council, it sounds like they, that Lime has a representative here. Would you like to hear from them?
Sure.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm assuming it's the guy with the Lime-colored helmet. No! Hey, well, oh, is that Josh? Don't even recognize him without his beard.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
As a comment, maybe a preface to some of your remarks, it sounds like there's, there's clearly shared concern, and a company like yours in any community lives and dies with the success or challenges with its rollout, right? And it can be wildly beneficial or very problematic. And if the request might be, it might not even need a cease and desist, but a voluntary termination of the agreement, allow everyone to step back, regroup, whether that takes two weeks or two months, and, and, you know, come hand in hand with ACHD, the School District, law enforcement, and see if there's some new teeth and terms that everyone can agree to and comply with for a, kind of a 2.0?
Yeah, absolutely.
If that's possible, it would be, obviously, a voluntary and immediate termination of the current agreement to allow all that to get sorted out.
Okay.
If I could have you state your name and address. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Aaron Kittle. I'm the Ops Manager for Lime Bike here in Boise and Meridian.
Thank you, Aaron.
You're welcome. So, Madam Mayor, Council, thank you. I, I do want to recognize that there have been some missteps probably through this entire process. We've learned a lot on, on our side, but I can say that my team has conveyed to me that they have pledged support to collaborate and have worked to collaborate with not only members in this room, but also members at ACHD. I know they've reached out to Director Wong on several occasions, and been unsuccessful in, in connecting with him on some levels. We've talked a lot about it, about the negatives tonight, I think. We've heard, heard a lot of that. But, I also want to speak out and say that there's been a lot of positives, which just in that few, three short days, our ridership numbers rivaled that of some of our major metropolitan partners in and around the area in the Northwest. And so, we, we do know that it's something that is intriguing and exciting to, to the area. I think Meridian is, is definitely ready for something like this. And I can tell you, I've had the opportunity to meet with Attorney Neri and Chief of Staff, Robert Simison, over the last couple of days, and have pledged my support as local, kind of boots-on-the-ground, to come back, kind of to square one, and really do the outreach that we promised that we would do with the community as far as working with local businesses on coming up with ways that we can create designated hubs and parking locations for these scooters, to educate the community, our riders. In fact, we're, we're planning on doing one this Saturday at Centennial Park from eleven to three, where we'll have myself and members of my team out there with a couple of scooters and walking people through the app, showing them how to safely unlock, to ride, to dock, and so on and so forth. On top of that, we've, we've also made, we have made some contact with members of the Village. I've spoken to the Operations Manager there, and we are working on coming up with a collaborative approach to also design and designate hubs and spots for, for these scooters on the Village campus there to protect the aesthetic and keep walkways clear as far as that goes. But, yeah, outside of that, I, I mean, I think, I think the city, not just Meridian, but obviously Boise, is ready for something like this. I think we have the population and the interest to support that. And I think we, we want to make sure it's done the right way. To your comment as far as, kind of going back to square one, I will say that as of today, we have pulled a hundred percent of those scooters off the streets of Meridian. As we kind of go back and reevaluate how things went and how we can do things a little bit differently, and continue to kind of partnership, partner with, with the staff here tonight, as well as local businesses. As part of that effort, I also reached out to our downtown Business Association contact, their Nick, today. Wasn't successful in contacting him or getting in, in touch with him today to work something out, but pledged to, to come down and introduce myself and see what we can do to kind of smooth everything over and make this work for the community. So, I don't know if you have any questions?
Any questions from Council? It sounds like we appreciate the opportunity for you to dial it back and, and actually plan and get back on track to what we heard when you came and presented in front of Council. Working together, we can try and, and figure it out and learn from your deployment, what not to do, and work on how we can really see these be used in the manner that it has been anticipated. I, I do think that, for the most part, everyone was up here excited about the concept, interested to hear more, and maybe a little bit surprised when we didn't hear back from you. Then, all of a sudden, it shows up on our streets and-
Absolutely. And I, and I can't speak to what necessarily happened prior to me coming on board with the company. Alls I can tell you is that, from this moment forward, we, we want to take a different approach and make this work and do it the right way. So-
Thank you, Aaron. That would be great.
Okay.
Mr. Burton.
I, if, if you can't get in front of Director Wong or anyone from ACHD, just please reach out. We'll, we'll make sure that happens for you.
Okay. Yeah, we, we have been having some challenges there, but I would, I would definitely love that opportunity.
If it's unsuccessful, just reach out to us. We'll, we'll make sure it happens.
Excellent.
I think you've gotten their attention.
Yeah. Probably not in the manner that we'd hoped to, but, yeah, we're on their radar.
Mr. Burton.
Is the intent that the, they'll remain off the streets until you kind of go back and, with ACHD and our law enforcement, and have those discussions? Come back and perhaps present what might be the new terms and conditions?
Yeah, I think we, well, I think we introduced a, a, a plan of action or an action plan to Mr. Simison last night. We haven't heard back on that, but the, I think the approach in that initial action plan was to scale everything back, pull everything off the streets, and then come back with a softer deployment as, as soon as possibly this Friday. I'm not sure if that's wise at this point, until we can educate and, and get before, like I said earlier, the local businesses and, and work on some partnerships and collaboration there.
Sure. Madam Mayor, it might be, might be unwise, in, in just my opinion. I think some of the mistakes we made, I was supportive of it, but I think our mistakes were not, you know, not knowing what we didn't know and, and really compelling you to have that outreach before even a contract was signed. I don't think we appreciated the magnitude of challenges this could create, even with good intentions.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, we missed it ourselves, which gives us extra concern and reason to pause and, and hope that you might continue the pause of deployment, really until you've got all these answers. You might get it answered pretty quick, but you take a big risk trying to roll it out again in the midst of solving problems.
Sure. Yeah, and I think that one of the things that we do want to do when we decide to redeploy is we'll, we'll go with a scaled-back version of that. I know we hit pretty hard with nearly three hundred scooters in just a few short days, so the, the approach on a redeploy would, would be to back off somewhat and come, come at a little bit slower, more phased approach as well.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So, did you get them all back?
All but-
Did you get the eBay one?
All but. Well, we lost that one, I'm pretty sure. And there's, there's a couple that we're still tracking down, so we've got about ninety-nine point nine percent of them in our possession.
Oh, you weren't the highest bid.
I didn't, I, to be honest with you, I didn't know eBay still existed, so.
Madam Mayor, I, I did want to say, I, I have received probably equal number of negative and positive responses personally. So, it is, it is a great program, and people are really enjoying it, but the, the negative, the, the impact of the negative outweighs the positive. So, although I feel it's a, it is a great program, and I hope that you are able to, we're able to work together and, and figure out a way to bring it back and phase it the way that it was supposed to be done in the first place. I mean, it sounds like we may have to create an ordinance regarding the laws of riding these things, and, and I think that working with our law enforcement is number one.
Absolutely.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you being here.
Yeah, have a good evening.
Thank you. Robert?
Madam Mayor, Council, just because I've been the one that's been, had a lot of conversations with, with these individuals. At the request of ACHD, I did reach out to them on Friday and asked that they cease and get their, move the scooters off of the ACHD right-of-way sidewalks. And I want to give Aaron and Lime credit. They have taken steps incrementally to get back. I think in three separate conversations, as late as five o'clock today with someone else other than Aaron with the company, I again asked them to, to stop and let's work together to try to roll this out. That conversation has not produced the answer that I, I believe that Council is somewhat implying from this conversation, and I don't know that Aaron has the ability to, to make that call, honestly. But, I also want to say, I am in conversations with another company that would like to deploy here as soon as possible, and they're watching tonight. They're looking what action you take that will determine probably how they move forward. You know, so if you like the three hundred scooters that you saw in the community on Friday, and you want to see another two to three hundred in the community in the next couple of weeks, I think that sitting here and doing, doing nothing or not giving clear direction and getting Lime's buyout will make it difficult for me to work with them to get the desired result that Council wants to see moving forward. So, I just want to throw that out there, that, that this, that that's out there. And I'll answer any questions you have, but I reiterate, the conversations have been had with ACHD, ITD, the Police Department, that putting this off to this for right now would be in the best interest while we try to evaluate. And we want to work with them. We do. I do. You know, I don't want to ride them, because I'm scared, but I want to work with them. So, I'm happy answering any questions.
Any questions for Robert? Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Robert, and would it be possible, since we need so many people at the table to make this work, would it be possible to get a report back prior to a relaunch? Because especially to Councilman Bortons, I feel like we kind of tripped up as well. We didn't know what to expect, but having left the police out, I feel like as the liaison was on me. So, I feel like we need another report before a launch of anyone.
I think that our office can help facilitate the, the meeting, and we can have it this week. So, we'll first pull the, the different parties together along with Lime, and we can report back next week at our, our workshop and ask that Lime not deploy any of their scooters until then, if that would be the direction of this council.
Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Trevor?
Chief, any, any final remarks?
Madam Mayor, Council, I was just kind of debating what to say, but, and this goes above Aaron. But they, Lime Bike has not followed through on any of their promises yet, not one. So, forgive me that I don't trust them when they say, "We're gonna pull back and not deploy again until we say it's okay." I think we need to do something more than voluntarily, but that's purely one person's opinion.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Chief, I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I don't know. I think that if we ask them not to deploy and they do deploy, well, then it's, I think, then, then they're done. So, I, I, I think that, I think that's enough to get them to hold off for a bit until we all get to the table and, and can, can agree on specific terms. Because if that happened, I would have no problem, just, yeah, being done with them for good.
Madam Mayor, Council Mylum, and I respect that, and so I have to say what I have to say on record, so they hear that. But, they already made a whole lot of promises that they said they were gonna do, and they haven't done, so we'll, we'll see. And also, we have another company on October fifteenth that wants to deploy as well. So, we absolutely need to wrap our minds around how we want this to appear in our city, how we want it to work, and we have to put controls on it. Otherwise, they're the ones that make up the rules. And there's still a lot of questions, even on state code, because if you look at state code, it's so far behind technology that we're trying to figure out how this even fits within the code. Segway, another company that came about years and years and years ago, had a vision, and they went out to every single state and said, "This is what our product is. This is what we want to do with it." And they had incorporated it into state law. And so, it specifically mentions that in state, in state code, in Idaho state code and across the United States, because they did their homework ahead of time. This is kind of a hybrid between where, is it a motor vehicle, is it not a motor vehicle, and what requirements you have to have and not have. If law enforcement is having a hard time figuring out what you can and can't do with this, what sort of expectations do we have for our citizens? And then, we wonder why we're having the problems that we have? I think we really need to take a step back and figure out, is this concept what we want in Meridian? And I think it is. How do we want it to look? And how do we want it to deploy? But, we discovered what sort of results we get when we go quickly, and I don't think those are the same results we want to go again. So, I, I guess I just need to put that on the record, so they hear what our concerns are.
Thank you, Chief.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Chief, do you believe that Boise's ordinance addresses the issues that you're looking at? Is that something we need to take a look at?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Little Roberts, there's, there's some conflicts in that with, with what we would do. One of the areas that, for an example, in current city code for Meridian, we prohibit bicycles on the sidewalks in downtown core. Bicycles. As we interpret it right now, these scooters, we believe, under code, are prohibitive on the sidewalks. Boise's ordinance will allow them to be on the sidewalks in particular incidences. And so, that, you couldn't adapt it completely. You'd have to sit there and go, "What do you want in Meridian? What are you trying to accomplish?" And look at that. Now, one of the things that Boise's ordinance talks about is, "You will drive in the bike lanes, you will drive in the roadways," and then it gives some exceptions to it if those aren't available, where then you could be on the sidewalk. So, it wouldn't be a, a continuous on the sidewalks. But, then that's an enforcement issue then, too. It's like, okay, is, is, are they driving on sidewalk legally at this point in time or illegal at this point in time? And, and we're not gonna know, and so, it's, it's gonna happen. So, those are just questions that you have to ask. Do you want them on sidewalks? And if so, change the law. But, that's not something that, that we can determine. We just enforce the code and make suggestions on what it should say. So, I do think it's a step. I do think it puts parameters on what they're trying to do, but you may not be able to adopt it completely, because what their ordinance is, is not necessarily what you may or may not want for Meridian. And I can't say that. That's something only you guys can decide, or our citizens.
Mr. Burton.
Madam Mayor, Chief, thank you. Just point of clarification, maybe you can ask this, or answer this question, or maybe Bill, but can, can these companies deploy without an MOU of any kind? Can they just show up one day and have it be open for business?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, yes, to a degree. They still have to comply with all federal and state codes, and any local codes that we have in place. And so, we currently have state codes that say you can't drive on sidewalks. We currently have federal codes that say you can't block, you know, ADA and things like. So, they have to comply with those. The MOU only covers them on city-owned property or city-controlled property, but on the sidewalks where they want to deploy them, they have a, get a licensing agreement with ACHD, or ACHD has to amend that licensing to the city of Meridian where we could allow that to happen. But, then it just becomes more enforcement issues.
Okay, any further questions? So, I assume that Robert has Aaron's phone number, and we will work on pulling that meeting together. Any, anything further, Mr. Neri?
Maybe one, one last comment, Mayor and Council. You know, we, we were trying to work within the existing codes. We don't like to create more law-
Will you pull that closer?
Oh, sorry. We, we try not to create more ordinances and more enforcement- Oh, sorry, we, we try not to create more ordinances and more enforcement tools if it's not necessary, and I think based on what we've seen in the rollout, and maybe to follow up on Councilmember Little Roberts' question, Boise, because of their green belt, have a completely different model on how they use these types of devices, bikes as well, and so that's the reason for their ordinance, now could we use some of that? Possibly. Again, our number one concern is the public safety and the public access, and that's, that's not being done currently, and that, we have to take a very hard line on to make sure that that isn't going to get impeded. Again, we want to work with them, we want to make this successful, and we were trying not to create a bunch of ordinances on top of it, if not, if not unnecessary, but we'll see if we can get something together quickly and make it successful.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, item nine is under action items, our first number, nine A, is a request to schedule a public hearing for November 7th on H-2018-0079. Sonia, is this one yours, or Ms. Neri's?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this application is requested by the applicant to be continued to the November 7th hearing, in order for the applicant to be present at the hearing, they were unable to attend this evening.
So this is a request for a continued public hearing?
Yes.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, if I may jump in, and Mr. Neri also can fill in any gaps here, so this is unusual, this isn't a traditional public hearing item, there was a memo in your packet, our code, section 11-5A, 6G5, requires that when the Planning and Zoning Commission is the recommending body, that this council receives that recommendation within 45 days. The applicant requested a waiver to that, or really didn't request a waiver, they said they waived their right to that requirement and wanted to schedule for November 7th. The, our code doesn't allow for such a waiver request, so what you have tonight is that agenda item, that application on your agenda, to meet that code intent, which will then allow the applicant to make the request to move to November 7th, and allow the council to make that determination. So it's, it's not a traditional item, and again, Mr. Neri can fill in any gaps that are, answer any questions you might have, but that's why it's listed the way that it is this evening.
And, and this request is made because the applicant cannot make any of the dates in the 45 days?
Correct, and in order to meet the noticing deadlines, the, the date that we had chosen was October 16th, so that we can meet those deadlines, they could not make that date, and so they said, "We waive our right to the 45 days, we'd like it on November 7th." We can't just quite waive it and then schedule for November 7th, the council has to see that request, which is why it's listed this evening.
Okay, Mr. Neri, anything to add?
Madam Mayor, I think, I think you covered it all.
Okay. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
If there are no questions, I would move that we grant the request and/or continue the request for a public hearing to be heard on November 7th, 2018, for H-2018-0079.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to set this to November 7th. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, item B is a public hearing on H-2018-0094. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the project before you tonight is a time extension for a preliminary plat and conditional use permit for Earl Glen subdivision. The site consists of 4.65 acres of land, zoned R8 and R15, located at 1780 East McMillan Road. In 2015, this property was rezoned in a preliminary plat, and CUP were approved for the construction of 17 single-family homes and 16 multifamily units. A DA was required as a provision of the rezon at the time. In 2017, a one-year time extension was approved by the director on the preliminary plat and CUP. This request is for a two-year time extension on the preliminary plat in order to obtain the city engineer's signature on the final plat and to commence the multifamily residential use as approved with the CUP. This is the second time extension for this project, as part of the extension, the UDC grants the council authority to require compliance with the most current provisions of the UDC. Therefore, staffer recommends two new conditions of approval as provisions of the requested time extension as follows. First, future development shall comply with the design standards and the architectural standards manual. Second, the applicant should comply with the public works supplemental specifications and drawings. Staff recommends approval with the conditions listed in the staff report. With that, staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Stephanie, and welcome to the team.
Thank you.
At this level, anyway. Council, any questions?
I'm trying to think of something.
Does the applicant have anything to add? Good evening, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Madam Mayor, council members, Penelope Constant Teikes, post office box 405, Boise, Idaho, 83701.
Thank you.
Everything that needed to be said is probably included in the project letter, the first slide that was shown, the two white parcels to the north of our site, the applicant also owns those. So they're exploring whether to move forward with just Earl Glen as it is now, or incorporate it into a larger-scale project. So there's been some purchase interest in the parcel, and they are just exploring their options for how to best move forward with this, or perhaps the additional parcels. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Okay, seen none.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we did have one sign up, Kim McKinsky indicated neutral but did not indicate she wished to testify.
Being, being no Kim, is there anyone else who would like to provide comment on this item? Seen none.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
May we close the public hearing on, remember we had, nine B.
Second.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
May we approve H-2018-0094.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve item 9B. Mr. Clerk, will you call? Yes, Mr. Borton.
Is, the motion includes the staff recommended new conditions of approval?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, item 9C has been requested to continue to November 7th. Staff, can you give us a little history on what the, why is the request being made?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm actually covering this one for Josh Beach tonight. The applicant is requesting continuance in order to address the concerns that were raised by staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission at the hearing.
Okay, so they're trying to address those before they come in front of council?
Yes.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone here tonight wishing to comment on this application?
Madam Mayor.
I, I will first go ahead and open this public hearing on H-2018-0057, and Mr. Burnt.
Do you have to close it?
No.
Oh, you just continue.
You want to continue it?
I move, Madam Mayor, that we continue H-2018-0057 to November 7th, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue 9C to November 7th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes? Okay, public hearing under 9D is for H-2018-0092. This is for a short plat, but I, I guess I'll, I'll just talk about process before we get into this first public hearing. Staff generally is the first to present, they give background information regarding the application that is in front of council for a decision. Then the applicant has up to 10 minutes to talk about anything in addition to what staff has presented, and then we get into the public testimony area. Public testimony has a three-minute opportunity to share your comments regarding the application, and if you are in support or opposed. And at the end, the applicant does have the final word at that time, we ask that the applicant follows up on any, any questions that might have been raised through public testimony, and provide any additional information. At that point, if the applicant has answered all the questions, council will ask questions of staff applicant, or perhaps someone that provided testimony they would like a little further detail from. That is our process that we follow with our public hearings, and in particular for land use and city ordinances. And I, I do want to note that prior to the council meeting tonight, the council has an opportunity to review all the materials in their packet, that includes staff reports, agency comments, planning and zoning hearings, et cetera, and any testimony that comes in its written form. So with that, I will ask for staff comments on item 9D.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the next application before you is a request for a short plat. This site consists of 1.23 acres of land, it's zoned R8, located east of South Meridian Road, midway between Overland and Victory Roads at 200 East Roslin Court. In 2005, this property was annexed in a preliminary plat and final plat was approved for Larkspur Subdivision Number Two, consisting of 47 single-family residential building lots and five common lots on 10.3 acres of land. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this property is low-density residential, which is three or fewer units per acre. The proposed short plat consists of four building lots on 1.23 acres of land in the R8 zoning district, and is a re-subdivision of Lot 9, Block 4 of Larkspur Subdivision Number Two. The existing home will remain on a lot in the proposed subdivision, and will continue to have direct access via Roslin Drive. The other three lots will be accessed via a common driveway from Roslin. Written testimony has been received from Steve Arnold, the applicant's representative, he is in agreement with the staff report. Staff is recommending approval with the conditions in the report. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonia, any questions for staff at this time? Okay, is the applicant here this evening? Good evening.
At Penelope Constant Teikes, post office box 405, Boise, Idaho, 83701. I'm here for Steve Arnold this evening, he's at a meeting north of here and was not able to attend. So, two neighbors attended the neighborhood meeting, Steve conveyed to me that they seemed to be excited by the project. The applicant, property owner, have both reviewed the staff report, are in agreement, and are happy to comply with all the conditions of approval. With that, I would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, were there any signed up to provide testimony?
There are not.
Is there anyone who wishes to make comment on this application?
No one.
Seen none. Counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
May we close the public hearing on item 9D.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
May we approve H-2018-0092 with all staff and applicant comments.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 9D. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carrying. Item 9E is a public hearing on H-2018-0075. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the next application before you is a request for annexation and zoning and a conditional use permit for the Oihe High School. This application is coming forward to you tonight with a recommendation of denial from the staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and staff will go into the reasons why later in my presentation. This site consists of 108.76 acres of land, it's zoned RUT in Ada County, and is located west of North McDermott Road on the north side of West Eustick Road at 7020 West Eustick Road. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this property is medium-density residential, and it does have a school site designated on the future land use map in this general area. The applicant is requesting approval to annex and zone a total of 108.76 acres of land, consisting of three parcels from the RET zoning district in Ada County to the R8 zoning district in the city, consistent with the medium-density residential future land use map designation. A conditional use permit is requested for the following: an educational facility, a high school in an R8 zoning district, lighted fields, and an outdoor speaker system adjoining and within a residential district, the generation of vehicle trips per day in excess of 1,500, and access proposed from a collector's street, and there is not safe, separate pedestrian and bikeway access between the neighborhood and the school site, in accord with UDC Table 11-2A2 and the specific use standards listed in 11-4-3-14 education institution. A conceptual development plan was submitted as shown that demonstrates how the overall site is proposed to develop with a 246,390 square feet high school to serve 1,800 students on approximately 66 acres of land in the central portion of the site, with 15.7 acres reserved for a future elementary school at the north end of the site, and future residential development proposed on the 11.63 acres at the south end of the site, and 15.43 acres on the east side of the site, which is the Spriggle parcel. So, just to show you about where that's at, the Spriggle parcel is right here. That area, that piece of land is the annexation path for the school property, and there is no development proposed on that parcel, it's, it's solely being annexed for the annexation path for the school. The northern portion of the property right here is where the elementary school site is proposed, and down here on the south is the future residential area, and that's depicted on their concept plan here. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for the high school, as shown, the structure is proposed to be divided between one and two stories. Building materials are proposed to consist of integral colored structural CMU and CMU veneer in smooth and split face finish with pre-finished metal panel, accent panels. The roof is low-slope membrane roofing concealed by combination of parapet walls and mancered roof finished with standing seam metal roofing. The staff recommendation of denial of the annexation and consequently the conditional use permit was for the following reasons. The fire and police department do not support a single public access to the site as proposed for life safety reasons due to the size of the project, anticipated occupancy of the high school, and future elementary school, traffic generated from sporting events, and the need for traffic to be able to enter and leave the site efficiently and quickly, especially in the event of an emergency. In an emergency situation, the single access could be blocked, and there would be no other way in or out of the site. The fire department cannot meet response time requirements for this development without another fire station being constructed closer to the site. Ada County Emergency Services would also have extended response times to this site. Current resources would not be adequate to supply service for this project. The police department response times to this site are estimated to be beyond the average response times recorded by Ada County. To mitigate the extended response time, an SRO officer- To mitigate the extended response time, an SRO officer and office would need to be provided at the school. And I'm going to just take a moment here, and... And that's not going to work. Give me just a second here. Oh, there it is. So there's the Google Earth view of the property. And as you can see, this is very much a rural area. There is no development or urban services around this property. It's currently a dairy farm, and there's agricultural land surrounding it. Safe pedestrian and bicycle access to the school site does not exist because the property is a rural area. Inclusion of the Spriggle parcel within the annexation boundary solely for the purpose of providing an annexation path for the school without that parcel being part of the development application promotes leapfrog development and creates sprawl, which isn't good planning and doesn't allow for efficient provision of city services and infrastructure to be constructed. It also creates a Swiss cheese issue for the police department in that only the north half of Eustick Road and the west half of McDermott Road would be in the city, and the surrounding roadway would be in the county, which would require the Ada County Sheriff's Department to service the unincorporated land and roadway in between. There is approximately 2,500 acres west of 10 Mile Road to McDermott Road, north of 84 that is yet to be annexed into the city and developed. That's right here. You can see the colored areas are the annexed area in the city, and the white areas are still in the county. The red dot is where this subject property is located. Providing city services to this property is not an efficient provision of services and creates confusion on service boundaries. No other properties have been annexed on the west side of McDermott Road. In fact, a project to the north of this site, Copper Brick Subdivision, was denied a couple of years ago by council based on council's decision that it was not in the best interest to the city to annex the property at that time, based on comments from the public hearings. Reasons for denial discussed at the hearing were that the council wanted the city to develop from the inside out rather than the outside in, and concern that stretching city services out west of McDermott would take away services to existing residents and open up another square mile for development. Nothing in this area has changed since that time, except that many more developments have been approved and developed within the city that further impact the provision of city services. Annexation of the school site would stretch services even further. Because the school site doesn't extend all the way south to West Eustick Road and east to McDermott Road, street buffer landscaping and sidewalks are not proposed along these arterial streets. Additionally, because the elementary school site is not proposed to develop at this time, the north-south collector's street is not proposed to extend to the north boundary, which would create a gap in the collector's street if the property to the north of the annexation area develops. Annexation of the subject property would create a domino effect for adjacent properties to request annexation and further the sprawl and Swiss cheese issue experienced by the police department when responding to calls. The city is already receiving inquiries from parties interested in developing land in the area west of McDermott near the school site. The applicant's conceptual development plan does not contemplate ITD's local street access plan for the properties that currently have access via McDermott Road that will be impacted by the extension of State Highway 16. While staff does recommend another high school is very much needed in North Meridian, staff does not feel it's in the best interest of the city to annex the property for development at this time. At some point in the future, when the city boundaries expand more fully to this area, it would be logical to annex and develop a school on this property. But with the life safety issues noted by the police and fire departments, staff does not feel it's in the best interest of the city to annex and develop this property at this time. At this time, I'll go through the commission, summary of the commission hearing. Again, the commission did recommend denial of these applications. Those that testified in favor of the application were Eric Exline, Chief Communication Officer of West Ada School District, the applicant, Matthew Adams, the land group, the applicant's representative, Ed Klopstein, Mark Freeman, Foley Freeman, counsel for the West Ada School District, Eric Thies, President of the West Ada Education Association, and Mike Boutinet, excuse me very much if I mispronounce your name. In opposition was Jeffrey Wardle, Spink Butler, counsel for Boise Hunter Homes, and Woodside Avenue Investors. And commenting was David Ferdinand, Gwen Baum, Jim Hunter, Boise Hunter Homes, and Paul Moore. Written testimony was received from Jeffrey Wardle, Spink Butler, Mark Freeman from Foley Freeman, and Gerald Flower. Key issues of discussion was the need for a new high school to serve area residents as Rocky Mountain High School is over capacity, access to the Woodside Avenue Investor Boise Hunter Homes property to the east. And I'll just flip back here real quick. This is the Woodside property right here. And only one point of public access to and from the site and the associated life safety concerns. Key issues of discussion by the commission were as follows: the need for a secondary public access to the site, other properties owned by the school district that would, that might be more suitable for the development of a high school that are not on the city's outer fringe, the Swiss cheese effect of annexing this property and creating more sprawl, the provision of access to the Woodside Avenue Investor property to the east, desire for the project to not be delayed and move forward to council while the applicant addresses the issues noted in the draft conditions of approval. Just a side note, staff is, was always recommending denial of this project, but staff did prepare some draft conditions of approval just for talking points if the commission and council chose to go forward with a positive recommendation and approval of this project. They are only draft. They do need to be revisited if the council decides to approve this project tonight. So staff would be recommending a continuance if that is the case. So just a side note on those draft conditions. They really aren't conditions because staff is recommending denial, subsequently the commission. Recommendation of denial stated by the commission were based on the following: the patchwork of annexation it will provide if this property is annexed, no secondary public access particularly to McMillan Road with a signal, and safety concerns noted by the police and fire department. Written testimony since the commission hearing, there have been many, many letters of testimony, the majority of which are in support, but there are some against. And then there was a memo from Gary Allen and Jeffrey Bauer, Givens Persley, that included a memo of understanding submitted from Heartland Homes Property Management LLC committing to the extension of a north-south collector's street from the north boundary of the school site to McMillan Road contingent upon annexation of the property to the north. While that would solve the access issues for this site, staff does have some strong concerns about that. It doesn't only concern the extension of the road, extension of city services. Water and sewer mains would be required within that roadway as well, so there would be substantial costs associated with that, as well as pedestrian facilities along that street. And this is not a consent from the property owner. This is from, to my understanding, the potential developer of the site. And this would be solely contingent upon annexation of this property to the north of this property out to McMillan Road, in which the city does not even have a development application at this time. Staff did meet with them today for a pre-application meeting to discuss the possibility of them submitting an application and going forward with this. But just so the council knows where we're at on that, that's the situation. And then we do have a video for you tonight from our police and fire department that I'd like to show here.
We're currently located at the primary entrance of where that school would be.
We have a volume.
We're currently located at the entrance of where that school would be, the new Oaihe High School. Let me say, as a parent, and as a chief of police, I...
Back this up real quick here, so...
We're currently located at the primary entrance of where that school would be, the new Oaihe High School. Let me say, as a parent, and as a chief of police, I recognize that we need a new high school. I see the overcrowding that my son faces every day. I have 10 SROs in the schools every day. We recognize that there's a need for a new school. But my job is public safety, and public safety has to be paramount to anything else that we do.
Again, to echo Chief Lady's comments, we're not here to say if this project is good or bad, whether we need schools, whether we don't. The biggest concern the fire department has with this project is access into the location. We can see we're on Eustick Road here right now. McMillan is to our north. One point of access for a fire department response is not a good access. We send multiple apparatus to these types of calls. Trying to get multiple apparatus into a location when we have people trying to get out is bad for our overall mission of providing safety to the kids and the adults that are going to be in this facility.
It's imperative that we have at least two public access entrance and exits for any number of reasons. If you've dropped off your kids to a school in the morning or an evening of any high school in Meridian, you know it's chaotic at best. There's a lot of people that's trying to either get into or out of a space. We're on a county road, 50 mile an hour speed limits. There is no stoplights, turn lanes, shoulders, or sidewalks. And so that's an infrastructure that's currently lacking. You are in rural Ada County currently. One of the other concerns I have is that we have a lot of young drivers in high school, a lot of inexperienced drivers in high school. These are not the types of roadways that we necessarily want them driving on. As you watch this film, you're going to see the traffic that goes by. Keep in mind, this is the type of traffic that we're experiencing at 2 o'clock in an afternoon before this area is developed. And you definitely need to have those wide shoulders and those sidewalks to protect those kids.
There's always ways to work in partnership between the city and our business owners or our school district. I know our fire department and the police department, the folks that are working with the school district, have provided three different options for access. We just want to make sure whatever gets decided ultimately meets the needs of public safety responders to provide safety to the folks that are going to be out here.
Staff will stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions at this time for staff?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Sonia, could you show us on the map where the closest services for connecting water and sewer would be to this property?
Mr. Stewart here can respond to that.
Okay, thank you.
So the closest sewer service at this point is just to the north off this page. There's a lift station. A main trunk line would have to be constructed about 1,500 feet to get to a point where it could come off this way and come into the northern portion of the property. The closest water service connection is probably almost another quarter to a half a mile to the east on Eustick Road.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Does the fact that it's not close cause an issue, given that the applicant would be the ones paying for that?
Not necessarily. I mean, the services, we've master planned for those services to be put into place. The reality of it is, they do currently exist quite a ways from the site, and it will be a significant expense in bringing those services to the site. Water and sewer service can be, if they're done properly, we can provide the flows that are required on the water side and also the sewer flow that is necessary. My concern with this, probably the most significant concern I have, is there has been some desire expressed by the applicant to enter into a reimbursement agreement to get reimbursed for those costs. That's something that we don't typically do at the City of Meridian. In fact, we have had very similar requests, almost identical requests, from some of our development community, and we have always told them no, because this is what's contemplated in the master plan. And if you want to build this far out, this is what, this is the cost that you incur. You end up getting cheap land out here, but it comes, there's a reason it's cheap, and that's because it comes, sewer service and the water service come at a pretty steep cost.
Okay, any other questions at this time? Okay, is the applicant here?
How many do I need here? Are you ready, Madam Mayor?
Yes. Hi, Gary. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Gary Allen. I'm with the Givens Persley Law Firm. My work address is 601 West Bannock in Boise, and I'm representing the West Ada School District. I'm very excited to be here tonight to talk with you about the Oaihe High School. We have asked for a little extra time for our presentation, given the importance of the issue and some somewhat complex issues. So hopefully we can accommodate 20 to 30 minutes.
Counsel, we've never had that kind of request before. I will give you 15. I'll extend it up to 15. Counsel, any issues with that?
Okay, well, I'm sure this will all come out in wash as we go. So what we'd like to cover tonight, one is a little bit of information about why this school is needed now and in this location, why this is a community asset, and then some of the specific issues that were raised. Number one, we disagree that this is a patchwork annexation. Secondly, to discuss the second public road, which we think is the major concern of the police and fire, the safe routes to school issue and how we propose to resolve that, the Woodside Investors access issue, and then the conditions of approval that we have proposed. Let me begin by introducing Eric Exline from the school district to talk a little bit about the need and location of this project.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I mean, do whatever you'd like with your time. I don't think any of us have any doubt whatsoever of the need. I'm most interested in the latter things that you had mentioned, you know, understanding your remedies to the concerns that have been brought up. By all means, you know, preach to the choir about the need for this school, but, you know, the time is yours, but I'd recommend focusing on what to do about all the concerns.
We've got a little less time than we expected. Maybe I'll just cover this very quickly, and we'll get into the meat of the land use issues.
Thank you, Eric. That's the shortest presentation I've heard you give.
All right. So, I mean, we wanted to make sure the council understood that the kind of issues that are being discussed here, particularly as to the location of this school... So I'm showing you some information from the bond that was issued and, I mean, you're well aware that the surrounding high schools are dramatically overcrowded and that there's a significant need for this. The location is chosen, as all of the high school locations are, to be three to four miles away from the nearest one. This one is a little closer than they would really like, actually. So the school district's committee, actually of 54 community members, looked at this closely, chose this site because it's in about the right location, it's in a place where growth can grow to it. And that's what you want to do with your public facilities. And so that was a very important consideration. It was specifically discussed in terms of the bond that this would be in this location, it would be open by fall 2020, and it'd be on the north side of Eustick, just west of McDermott, and that design work was underway to build this site in this location. So the school district's been talking about this location for months, as many of you are probably aware. Again, here's more materials talking about how this site was selected and where it would go. I think you all know that this has been very important for this part of town to have this school and to, and it'll provide, it'll improve the values around here and do all of the things that you want from a public school. So let's dive into the issues. First about patchwork annexation. We disagree that this is patchwork. It's in the city's area of impact, it's marked as a school site in the comprehensive plan, the zoning is permitted by the comprehensive plan, it's contiguous with the city limits with the Spriggle parcel. And again, the site was carefully assessed by the planning committee to be in the right place at the right time for a new school. You don't plan a couple of years ahead for a high school, you plan for decades. Meridian High School has been in your city for over 100 years and this school will be an asset like that. You can't be short sighted when you cite a piece of property like this. Here's where your city boundaries are now. That's, it's a logical extension of that. This will fill in quickly. You'll be surprised how quickly this high school is surrounded by development. You've got 14,000 units coming online in your city. You're going to need this high school to serve them. There is no infill site that works for this. All right, let's talk about the second public road. We think this is the really major issue that we've, that was raised of substance. We agree with everything we heard in that very nice video from the police and fire. I've never seen anything quite like that at a hearing like this. So it was, you know, that was, that was well done. We agree that there should be a second public access. Now, the district is providing an access all the way from its site down to Eustick. That's the first access. And they'd build the mid-mile collector all the way along there. The question is this spot to the north. Obviously, the school district doesn't control that, so how do we gain that access? Well, the district listened and went out and made a, reached an agreement with the developer of this, of the property, Trilogy. There's a representative here tonight, who's Bob Taunton, who's going to talk about this. And in this agreement, what Trilogy has done is they said, "We're going to seek annexation." You heard that that first, they had their first meeting with the staff this morning. We heard that went quite well and there were a lot of very interesting and helpful things discussed there. Trilogy has agreed to build the mid-mile collector. My understanding is that includes the pedestrian facilities. Obviously, they'll have to bring the utilities that serve their development in whatever, in the way that the city requires. And that this all has to be done by completion of the high school. And then on top of that, Trilogy has agreed to provide a fire station site, which I understand the fire department is pretty excited about, in order to help alleviate the concerns about the level of service that can be provided out here. Even though it really isn't too bad as it stands now, this addresses that concern and gives the ability to build another fire station when that's required. So when we get to the conditions of approval, what you'll see is, not that the, that the condition of approval is simply that the school district, or that the road has to be constructed by the, by the completion of the high school. We don't get a walk away from that condition if somehow you decide not to annex, annex the Trilogy site. So at that point, there will be options and, you know, if something like that happens, we'll have to figure out what to do. But the school district has said, "We will commit that the road has to be built by the time the high school is open." That's the important point. Let's move from that to safe routes to the, to the site. So the district is going to build over a half a mile of sidewalks on the mid-mile collector, on the east-west collector over to McDermott, and the, on Eustick. And so they're doing a lot to help alleviate that pedestrian access issue. However, they can't be expected to build all the sidewalks in the area as the staff's recommendation was, there was over two miles of additional sidewalks which were proposed by the staff. That's not only a fiscal concern, but it's also like, how do you get all the landowners to agree to that? That simply wasn't practical.
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt. Madam Mayor, can we see a picture of what he's explaining?
I was writing down.
Can we see a picture of what the gentleman is explaining about the sidewalks?
That makes it a challenge because this is his PowerPoint.
Okay, maybe.
Maybe we can.
Maybe could we address that in the questions?
Sure.
Try to understand.
Sure, good idea.
And I'm not entirely sure I understand where all the staff was proposing.
Sorry to interrupt.
But.
That's a good idea.
So, but the solution that the district has proposed, which we understand that the staff concurred in when we met with them last week, was that we would simply provide busing for all of the students to go to this site. As the, you know, area around it fills in, then you'll have other, other options. But that's the practical solution for now. All right, so let's talk about the Woodside Cross Access. So as you heard, the Woodside property is right here. And this is the southern part of the school site where there's future residential or no development application proposed at the moment. What the Woodside developer has asked is that the school build a 50-foot street from here to here to provide access in the event that Highway 16 gets built here. And so they have at least a second access if they get hemmed in by the intersection there. And we agree that secondary access should be provided to that property. That's not, not the issue. The biggest issue is that it doesn't make any sense to build this street now. The State Highway 16 project, the location, and the timing are all uncertain. We could be building a road to nowhere. ITD has agreed to build this local street here when it builds the intersection, which will give a first access to that, to that site. And then the other issue is that the, the school district doesn't have any plans to develop that southern parcel at this point. So, in my experience, in a multi-phase project, I've never seen where the developer had to actually build the streets in a future phase to, to help somebody else's access issue. So, rather than build the road, what the school district proposes, and, well, let me just say that that's a $400,000 to $500,000 project, that comes right out of the school budget if that goes to provide access to that developer. So what we propose instead is it to provide access to and to dedicate right away for a local street, which would be right in this location here. This is a conceptual development of what might happen on this property. It's going to connect to the north end of this flower parcel, which would provide access through when it develops. This allows us to build a street at a distance from the intersection that meets, which is a local street, which is allowed in that location and is far enough from the intersection to make sense. What we're proposing is that the first to develop pays for the street. That's the way that it normally works and that's what we would expect to do here. The last issue around this is utilities. So the developer has asked for certain water and sewer locations. Our proposal is consistent with what they've asked for as far as water goes, so I don't think, I think that works from their standpoint. And as far as the sewer goes, they want to connect into our sewer system and into that sewer drainage. We don't have a problem with that, but the city of Public Works does. So they, the city wants them to be in the McDermott drainage, as I understand it, when that product, project is built. So we can't offer them any help there. So that's the last issue that we have, the last major issue that we've got here, as I understand it. So what we've done to make this easier for you is we took the draft conditions of approval that the staff recommended and we marked them up in this document, which is in the packets that we handed out. And this, then we just have a clean version of those. And so mostly they're, you know, minor markups are the same as what the staff proposed. There are three, some differences, of course. So the safety busing issue, where we proposed to address the safe sites through busing, that's condition H. You can read through that and see if that addresses your concerns. The second public access is in condition K and the Woodside Cross Access is addressed in condition G. So we've proposed solutions to all of those. So if you agree with what we have to say tonight, you can simply move approvals with the applicant's proposed conditions of approval. We're not opposed to giving the staff and everybody some time to kind of hash through details on the conditions of approval if we're generally in, in agreement here. Obviously, you've got a few major issues that you, that you need to work through. As we went through this process, what we heard is that the second public street access was the big thing and that, we may misheard this, but our understanding is that that addressed the concerns of the fire and, and police along with the, the second fire station site. The issues about, you know, additional sprawl and all of that did not seem to be, well, and, you know, the staff can speak for themselves, but we, we did not perceive those as being critical issues here. We think that, you know, you're going to be looking a lot, you know, we're going to create some delays and issues with the location of this high school. If you want to try to move it in closer somehow and wait while the, while the crowding gets worse, I think we, we'd like to have, I think I'll probably ask Eric to come up here during the public testimony and talk a little bit more about that sighting decision was made and how they decided that they wanted to be here, because that was carefully done. That was not a haphazard decision at all. And we hope that the city's planning and the school district's planning can mesh in that respect. So with that, I think I'm done with my presentation. I appreciate the extra time. If you, hopefully, you know, if there are questions, we can have, start having a little dialogue here about what remains to be resolved here, because we all know that this commit, this community needs a new high school and it needs it yesterday. You know, the best we can do is 2020 or 2021, but let's get going on that tonight. So thank you very much and take any questions.
Thank you, Gary. Yes, Ms. Mylan.
Yeah, thank you. And I, like Councilwoman Palmer said, there's not one of us sitting here that doesn't understand the extreme need for, for more schools. And I appreciate the adding of the road because obviously I watched the, the planning and zoning hearing and that was the main, the, the main issue. There are a lot of other issues that was like the main safety issue. What about, I know, I read ACHD's report and they had a lot of, a lot of stuff to say. Is there any other recommendations from ACHD as far as road widenings and signals? And they had quite a long laundry list of things they wanted you to do as well.
My understanding is we are prepared to accept all of ACHD's recommendations as a condition of this.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah, so there, and I didn't talk about this. I need to learn to talk faster, I guess, but there, you know, there was a carefully thought through access plan and, you know, and my understanding is with the conditions that ACHD provided, they were comfortable with access and, and safety on the roads and, and there's no issue in, in performing those conditions. I think we may, we have them all in here. If we don't, then they can be added for sure.
And this one?
And again, we, we started with the school, with the city's conditions, so I'm, I can't, I can't guarantee they all are in there, but again, all of ACHD's conditions should be included.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Talk to us about the, the two miles of, I guess, off-site sidewalk that you mentioned, kind of, maybe we get a map and figure out kind of where all that is that you're being asked to construct.
Let's see, can I just escape out of that? Would, yeah, would you mind finding us a map here?
Madam Mayor, well, he's looking that up. I forgot I have a disclosure to make.
Yes, Ms. Mylan.
You're a teacher?
No, but while I was sitting here tonight, my best friend messaged me and said, "I vote in favor of the school." And I said, "You can go online and state that and I'm not allowed to talk to you about this, but..." I figured I better disclose.
Thank you.
It doesn't get a vote. I'm not here.
Okay, can you point out, where did the staff propose sidewalks? Or Matt, do you want to come up? Are you familiar with that location?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So now that, that empty box in the top right, if you touch that, that'll give you the power to draw on this $300,000 system we just put in here.
Nice. So, Madam Mayor, just, just for clarification, these are not conditions of approval that are going forward and before you deny. Staff is recommending denial, as is the commission. So these were just simply some very, very rough concerns that were in regard to our comprehensive plan, providing safe access to the schools. So they aren't conditions. Please keep that in mind.
We need the right verbiage.
Good evening.
Hi, Matt.
I'm Matthew Adams. I'm at 462 East Shore Drive, Suite 100 in Eagle, Idaho. And I'm also on the team for the school district. I think staff can probably describe better where they had, for discussion purposes, presented sidewalks. But basically, Councilman Palmer, it was all along McDermott, from McMillan to Eustick, and then it was from our site on Eustick eastward, basically to Black Cat, as well as all of our roadway frontages. Now, we do plan on constructing, as is normal, on all of our roadway frontages. That'd be the mid-mile collector that goes north-south, the east-west mid-mile collector, as well as Eustick. So all of the frontage that our development parcel fronts on roadway will get sidewalk and then we would safety bus any student and all students beyond that.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylan.
So regarding that, and I read somewhere, and I don't remember if it was a stat, in the staff report, maybe that said that you would probably bus students, but that decision would be made in the spring of 2020 after a meeting to decide.
Mayor, Councilman, Councilperson, the law, I, I don't know exactly what the staff report said on that.
and then we would safety bus any student and all students beyond that.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylan.
So regarding that, and I read somewhere, and I don't remember if it was a stat, in the staff report, maybe, that said that you would probably bus students, but that decision would be made in the spring of 2020 after a meeting decide.
Mayor, Councilman, Councilperson, the law, I, I don't know exactly what the staff report said on that item. However, the presentation that West Data has provided to you, it is clear that safety busing is planned and will be provided.
It's required as a condition of approval in what we've presented you.
Okay, council, any further questions for the applicant at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I do, I do have a couple. Real quick on, great presentation. It's great to see you again. I appreciate you helping out present this project. On that sidewalk question, is it the position of the district that the sidewalks, that mile plus, are not necessary, so shouldn't be part of it, or that they're necessary, but they're cost prohibitive?
I, I think, Ms. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, I think that it's, it's a variety of things. Number one, we think that as a practical matter for a high school, you really don't have that many kids who bike and, and walk, and so, you know, busing is a more practical answer. Secondly, is it's cost prohibitive, or it's very costly. Again, that's money that comes right out of the campus if you, if you require off-site sidewalks. There's no other pot of money to build those. And then the third thing is just practicalities of getting approval from, you know, the off-site landowners, where if you don't have right-of-way, or you're, you're not building within the right-of-way.
Madam Mayor, just a couple of other questions. One that came up, and you mentioned it tonight, I think your letter, this, or September 27th referenced it as well, the, the solution trying to connect to McMillan?
Yes.
North?
Mm-hmm.
Which is conditioned upon that, that northern parcel coming forward with an application and annexation, and conditioned upon the city council at that time approving the annexation. Is it, is it the position of the school district that not only will that connection to McMillan be fully constructed prior to a certificate of occupancy, but should the parcel to the north not develop, that the district would do so at its expense and then intend to be reimbursed either by ACHD or the developer at a future date?
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, I'm glad you asked that question. What's Plan B on, on the, on the secondary road? So let me just read the condition that we proposed to start with. It says, "The north-south mid-mile collector shall be extended north to McMillan Road for two points of public street access to the street site prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy for the high school. This will include construction of the five-mile creek crossing in compliance with the requirements of NAMM from Meridian Irrigation District. The landowner to the north has entered into an agreement with developer to annex and extend the north-south mid-mile collector to West McMillan." The important part of that is, this isn't contingent that the school district has said the road's gonna be built before the, 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 the school opens. Now, you're not obligated to annex the property to the north, so what happens if that doesn't happen? And there would be, you know, some sort of decision tree at the school district at that point. One decision is, okay, I guess this site doesn't work. Another one would be, okay, let's try to figure out, maybe the school district does build the collector with some sort of reimbursement. You know, or maybe there's a Plan C, which would provide a different public access.
Right.
So, but at this point, the district is willing to say, "Our permit is conditioned on building that road."
Madam Mayor, I appreciate that. I think that's one of the challenges amongst others with this as we go forward, is one of the most difficult things that could occur in two or three years is a fully constructed school site awaiting students, and then the property to the north doesn't develop, you know, everyone's really stuck, and then it would be, might be unlikely, perhaps a bit difficult. The room might be very crowded if a future council says, "No CO, you can't occupy the school." That's a really difficult situation. So those types of solutions would probably need to be crafted and included in any part of a possible approval here that, that would really give clarity that says something to the effect of, if it's not done as intended or as hoped, the district does it and comes up with, and has a reimbursement agreement perhaps with ACHD, with impact fees, with the developer, there's, I know you know multiple ways to do that, but all of those specifics might be necessary upfront to gain comfort that nobody's, you know, really caught, nobody intends things to not work out, but boy, if they don't, that is a massive disaster potential. So it'd be great to try and have all that solved before anything would get approved here, one way or the other.
May I respond? Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, so if I'm hearing you correctly, you'd rather have Plan B, C, et cetera lined out ahead of time, essentially, if we, if we could?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, really the issue is, is if something were to get approved, if there's 100% certainty that if, and you had said, "We agree that a secondary access is important and necessary," and our police and fire and, and those positions are all valid and warranted, I agree with you and agree with, with public safety. That being so important, we would want that certainty that, and it's happened in other, you know, non-school district projects, but in a, in a private development project where there's been that commitment that says, "Should this path A not happen, we will fund it, construct it," and how you get reimbursed, there's ways to get reimbursed, but
Right.
Concern from the city would be that it gets built and we're not holding a CO hostage if something didn't work out.
Madam Mayor, if I may, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, I appreciate that, and I want to make very clear that the school district is not acting recklessly and proposing what it, what it did.
Don't think so either.
Because, you know, I think the way we're looking at it now is, we're gonna know relatively, you know, if there's an application coming directly to annex the, the Trilogy parcel, we're gonna know soon enough whether the city has an appetite for that, that we can, you know, decide, decide without expending a lot of public funds, getting, you know, probably shouldn't say this, but pregnant on this project, you know, in a way that cannot be undone, cannot be stricken from the record if that was inappropriate.
I can't unhear it. I am trying.
So, you know, there's, there's a decision-making process going on there. I don't think we're opposed to, you know, mapping that out a little more, in a little more detail.
And, and Madam Mayor, I don't necessarily think that's, you probably can stand on the fly and answer that. That's a big commitment and a big, you know, discussion perhaps with your client. You certainly wouldn't suggest that this get tabled and try and come in along with the northern parcel as a much larger project many months later. That's probably not the path you want to pick either, but, but I just wanted to bring it up early to let you have time to, to think about it. That type of concern is one of the ones on the front end.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, you know, I, yeah, I don't know that we want to be totally tied at the hip with that annexation. However, you know, I don't think we would be opposed to a, you know, a short deferral to try to craft a condition that might kind of address more of the contingencies there.
Thanks, Gary.
Any other questions at this point?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Just one question, briefly. I wanted Mr. X-line to come up and just give that snapshot on why this location, I think that, if that's what the scope of you, what you're gonna add, and you walked all the way up, and we love seeing you, and I don't want you to walk back.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I will try and be brief. This, this bond committee probably had his vexing a challenge, I'm sorry. Mike, oh, that's right, I forgot, you all know.
Name and address for the rest.
Eric, X-line chief communicates, and Officer, West Data School District, 1303 East Central Drive, Meridian. Sorry, I'll begin again. They had a really vexing problem. We had Eagle High that, three years ago, is at capacity, and it's now 271, so it's meeting its expectations to over-enroll. We have Rocky that's been running consistently at 600 kids over, actually, this year it's 650. They're not growing a lot, there's not a lot of growth potential there. Nevertheless, we registered 58 kids at our summer registration because they chose to find a house in the Rocky attendance area, so they're still growing incrementally. We have Meridian Hyde that has some space, but has 8,700 approved home sites in its attendance area. That's 2,000 future high schoolers. And then we had Mountain View that has been running consistently at 450 over, but it, although there's growth potential, it's been fairly flat, right? So they had to look at all those pieces and say, "How do we help Eagle? How do we help Rocky? How do we absorb all of the growth from those 8,700 kids, and what do we do about Mountain View?" So should we build two high schools? That was a question. Where should we locate it if we don't build two? So we had three sites. We have a site in Star, that's helpful for Eagle, but very difficult to do much for Rocky, okay? We have a site in the middle that actually sits in the Meridian High attendance area, so it's right in the middle of, of absorbing that, some of that 8,700, 2,000 kids that are coming. We have a site south of the freeway at Amity and 10 Mile. At the time, it was not very viable, because you guys couldn't get sewer to it, and Kuna hadn't, they have now, it's probably a half mile from that site, but that creates way more capacity south of the freeway than you actually need. So now you can't help Eagle at all, and you have two, two high schools south of the freeway with 1,400 kids in them, and two high schools north of the freeway that are still over. So as the committee looked at that and sorted out and started to eliminate sites, by the end, it was more than a supermajority opinion that this location was the one that was gonna help the problems that we have with one addition to the solution, which is we expanded Mountain View by six, I believe it's 16 classrooms, which will at least serve the kids that it has. That won't solve our problem, we'll need another high school south of the freeway, we'll need another one in Meridian's current attendance zone, we'll need two more in Eagle, and on it goes. In total, there's 14,500 platted home sites in the West Data School District. That's 11,000 kids in the, in the pipeline, right? This is the location that will help our problem now. That's what the committee felt. Again, there was representation from every school across the district. This was not an Eric sit in a room, or administration sit in a room and make a decision. This was the community weighing through in a variety of processes. They had individual surveys as a means of choosing what they thought, then we did table talk, conference about, and narrowed it down, and again, this was the site that they all said is gonna fix the problem right now. If we have to do something else, so our choices are we can build in Star, okay? That's gonna be problematic from an attendance area standpoint. You're gonna bus a lot of kids north. You can build south, and again, have way more capacity than you need south of the freeway. Those are the other two sites that we have. This is the site that works the best for the enrollment problem.
Eric, did you have the city on your committee?
Did I have the city on, on your committee? No, I didn't have representation from any of the six cities we serve, or the county. We've never, that, that's logistically pretty difficult, so we need representation from six municipalities?
If, if you're considering six sites in each of those municipalities, but I, I know our citizens will give us a hard time if during our comprehensive plan update, we don't ask the school district to participate, because you are a key partner. If you're talking about locating something in our city, yes, I would hope that we would be asked to be considered, so we could have told you. We've denied applications in this part of our community for a variety of reasons. Then that committee could have had that piece of information in making their determination.
Madam Mayor, our staff did speak with the city about this site prior to its purchase. If that would have been the case, if you would have said, "We aren't gonna accept this," we would have built in Star.
Our, our staff is not in that position to make those statements.
I just, I understand, but, but regardless, if you would have been on the committee and you would have said, "We're gonna deny it," then the committee would have said, "Our next choice is Star." That was their second-best choice. They're the only three sites we have. We don't own any other sites.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylan.
Something, a little bit to that direction. When the bond was going through, the general area, I, I don't think maybe we didn't realize how the exact location of, of the site, but we did know the general area, and, yeah, I don't think it would have passed if you said you were building a school in Star. I don't think it would have the majority. So, I mean, you kind of needed this location in order to, to get that majority, because that's where I think probably a lot of the voters are.
Madam Councilman, that is correct. It was very interesting on election night, I always go down and watch. We were losing by about 0.6% all night long, until the last 20 precincts came in, and the majority of them were in the Rocky Mountain attendance zone, and that barely pushed us over, because the community realized this was the right location. I, I agree with you. Running a bond saying, "We're gonna build a high school in Star," would have failed. Running a bond saying, "We're gonna run it south of the freeway," I think would have been done slightly better, but I think it also would have failed, and we barely squeaked by.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
This is a fascinating lesson on government. You know, the fact that everyone in the room has done their job. You guys have found a place, purchased property, you know, figured out the reasons why this makes the most sense for it to be. Staff has done their job in looking at our code and figuring out why this doesn't necessarily, why they're recommending against it, you know, for consistency in which we've done other things for the public safety issues, for all of the different things that we call for in code. Now, council's here to have to try to make this decision. The public's here, they've weighed in. This is just awesome. I, and, and I'm, I'm really glad that I, that I ran and that I'm here for this opportunity today, because I, I went to Mountain View High School. My sophomore year in high school was when Mountain View opened, and when it opened, we had one way in, one way out, one entrance. And we were told, "You're never getting another entrance, quit asking." So I went my three years there, I left to go on a mission, I came back, and there was a second entrance. I have no idea the history behind that, how that ended up happening, but I'm so glad it did. Now I live south of Mountain View High School. I live between, off Locust Grove, between Victory and Amity during the school year, even though I don't have kids in school yet. I've got four, but they're all too young to be, I know it's crazy, but anyway. I know when school is started, because when I pull out of my subdivision two miles down the road, I get to join a parking lot that's two miles out to Mountain View High School. And so when all of this happened after planning and zoning, and all of a sudden we started getting hundreds and hundreds of emails, the thing that really stood out to me that was, seemed like it was gonna be the most important thing to me, was that there ends up being a second entrance. So I'm really excited to hear that, that that is in the plan. I, I'm giving a lot of comment, usually I wait until after the public has testified, but I, I want to say all this so that the public knows what, what I'm concerned about and what, kind of what matters to me, so that hopefully, when they come up to testify, I know I kind of cut you off before, but we all agree, we need another school. So I'm really hoping to also hear from the public, what's important to you, whether you're for it or against it, which aspects of what we're discussing, is it, you know, is it a second entrance? That if this happens, okay, you know what, I was maybe against it before, but, but this makes it good for me? Is it that, you know, there's, there's not enough sidewalks that are gonna be there? Is it the, you know, the potential additional cost that it's gonna be, you know, to yourselves as taxpayers to, to run all those additional sewer and water lines? What is it beside the fact that we need it, that you're either for it or against it? Having said all that, please stay here, but I do have a couple of questions for fire and police. With the, the news of the potential, if this works out, the, the second entrance, does that alleviate any of the concerns, or would you guys be cool with that? And additionally, also with fire, thoughts on locating a fire station here in the future?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, that, that was our main concern, and as we met with Joe, it's not our, that's not the only concern. As Sonia read in the staff report, we have other concerns, mainly with response times, because we're, we're still, I mean, even though we're working with Trilogy on a potential for a fire station plot of land, as we all know, it takes time to build fire stations, and it's not gonna happen tomorrow. So we still have issues with response times. The, the ladder truck is, what was it, 15-minute response to get to the school from Station 1? And in my staff report, I didn't have the updated numbers, the staff, the, excuse me, the reliability for Fire Station 2 is only 80. excuse me, the reliability for Fire Station Two is only 80%. So that means that there's gonna be another fire station if Station Two's out on a call that's gonna have to respond. So there are other issues, but that secondary access was one of our, was number one on the list. And I, I noted that in July when I wrote my report, that they needed a secondary access point.
Madam Mayor.
Lieutenant Harper.
Good evening. Do I have, okay, now I got it on. Well, I know response times, um, our cars go a lot faster, so we get there a lot quicker. But, uh, response, regarding, regarding response times, we're not concerned with the response, um, out to that location. Uh, our crime analyst unit has done a lot of studies on response times and to those areas, different times of day, and that's not something that we're concerned about. Um, the big thing was the secondary public access, uh, for a multitude of reasons. Ingress and egress for students and staff, but also for first responders. Um, if there was an emergency situation or some catastrophic event, we need multiple locations to get into there. Um, and then for us was the continued partnership with our school resource officers in the school. And the three things that we had concerns with were all, were all agreed upon and met by the West Ada School District, so at this point, we're very, very happy.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Thank you. Um, that helps a lot. Um, with fire, would this be the, the, you know, proposed potential site for a future fire station? Would this be a location that we've looked at or an area that we'd wanna put one?
Yes, yeah. The fire chief and the ops chief, we've all looked at this location and that they're proposing, and it would be a good spot for a fire station.
Madam Mayor. And would Fire Station Six be a reasonable response at all? Um, or are we just looking at the other two?
I checked the response times when I was doing my report from Station Two or Station Six, it, it doesn't make any difference on the, the time.
Okay. Madam Mayor. Maybe kind of a final comment until hopefully anybody else has anything and then can hear from the public. Um, I, I've been extremely critical, frankly, my entire life of the Meridian and West Ada School District and, um, the many things that I've felt they've done horribly. I, but that's not what's before us today. It's before us today is, is what I feel is a, a fantastic move by the school district. To plan ahead, um, you know, we ask, you know, as citizens complain to us as elected officials about things that we don't have control over, oh, we need roads wide, no, we need more schools and, and places before we send people out to, to build their houses there, we all blame the other jurisdictions that handle these things. Um, so, again, that's part of why I'm really excited today is to, to have this opportunity for us to all now be together to figure out how to make this happen. Um, the, it was brought up that there was, you know, another project on the other side of McMillan, or McDermott that had been proposed. Don't quote me on it, but I believe I might've been the only one who did vote for it. Because I understand that while it may be awkward and, and inconvenient for a time, we have countless places throughout the city where property was annexed, you know, off of, um, off of the arterials and kinda wraps around, so there's, there's plenty of pockets that will eventually be developed that will have the sidewalks. Um, so your plan with the busing, while I know if I was in high school and I didn't have a car, I still wasn't gonna take a bus, but I know lots of people did because I'd get stopped by the bus on the one way that we could get out of the parking lot. Um, so I, I'm sure that people will ride them, so I, I, I definitely value that, that that's gonna be the, the proposed solution or Band-Aid, um, to get to that point to when eventually things develop around it, which they are going to and they're gonna happen fast, to eventually have those sidewalks and other access for, um, people to get there more safely. If this was just gonna be an elementary school, I think that might be a little more awkward. Um, but high school students drive, unfortunately for a lot of them, but, um, I think there's definitely potential here, and I really wanna know from the citizens, what is important to you with that? Are you willing to put up for a time with not having safe pedestrian access to the school to get it there? Or if you're opposed for the same reasons, what is it, not, I know we all need it, but what is it that, that is really making you against it or for it?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
More of a comment. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. As I've digested this information and, you know, through looking through the packet and reading through different information and, and listening to your presentation, the thing that comes to my mind over and over and over and over again is the fact of public safety. You know, I understand your urgency to get this done right now. I understand, and I wanna make it clear on the public record that there's not anyone that's sitting up on the stand right now that, that, uh, that doesn't understand the importance of more schools and the overcrowding that you guys face. We listen to it every week. I get multiple emails during a week talking about this very same thing, so we, I promise you, with all due respect, we get it 100%. We talk about a fire station. That's great. Well, right now, we're planning on putting a fire station, um, obviously Station Six in Overland. We've, uh, there's some plans south of Meridian for Fire Station Seven. And now with this proposed development, now we need Station Number Eight. To build a fire station is between $6 to $7 million. So what you're proposing is you want to build a school, but you also want us to take resources and, and, and taxes, uh, the money that we get from our citizens to dedicate toward a fire station that hasn't been in our crosshairs ever. There's, there's other needs that we've talked about before, before this location. And so, do our citizens want us to bond for it? That's 14 million bucks. It's a lot of money. You know, so, does that, does that get done before? You know, the school's built? I mean, my greatest fear is that we are in crisis because something has happened at that school, this proposed school hypothetically, and we're having some very scary discussions about, you know, we didn't get that fire station up quick enough and something happened out by Oaihe High School. Who's at fault, Mr. X-line? Who are people gonna come complain at, me or you?
I would say both, Mr. Councilman.
I think that they would probably come to my front door before they come to your front door. And that's just not a conversation that is scare, it scares me to death to have these, you know, to have a situation put in front of us because we did not provide enough safety for the kiddos and, and the people who will be going that direction. Big concern.
Do you want any response or just a comment?
Comment.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So, I was thinking anyway, um, you wanna appease them and him? When Trilogy brings their, uh, application, they have a fully-built fire station on there. It'd look really good and would cost them a fraction of the money because everything costs us more. Little bit in jest. I don't really expect them to bring, to build a fire station.
I just wanna tell.
Just throwing that idea out there.
I would just tell the public, this is highly unusual that we have had this long of conversation before we've had one person testify, so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I know. I do have another question for fire. Um, are there, are there any NAPA fire stations anywhere near it? Probably not, but.
No.
Okay.
It's at least six or seven miles away.
I would've figured, okay.
It's out there by the Ford Center.
Hmm, okay, thanks.
Any further questions for the applicant at this point? Thank you both.
Got your half hour plus.
Sorry.
As we get into the public testimony, I will, um, share that there is a timer that is on the screen in front of you, so you'll be able to track your, your time. And when the three minutes is up, I, I will note and ask you to summarize. So, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first signed up wishing to testify is Morgan Hatcher. Morgan here.
Okay.
Let's see Morgan. Morgan signed up in favor. Next is Katie Barinko. Wanted to address the council. Signed up in favor. Next is Tristan Joel Dodson. Wanted to address the council in favor. Miranda Carson. Signed up in favor, don't see Miranda. Kristy Frith. Signed up in favor, don't see Kristy. Okay, moving on down. Oh, Haley Howard signed up in favor. Addison Quam. Oh, Addison, Addison signed up also in favor. Frith signed up in opposition. Ed signed up in favor.
Stop.
Okay. Duly noted, thank you. Nope, Carrie signed up also in favor. David Blood.
All right.
First one.
Okay, just a little council chamber decorum. No jeers or hisses or clapping or cheering if we can all be respectful. If, sir, if you will please state your name and address for the record.
David Blood, 629 East Lake Creek Street, Meridian.
We were excited that we finally got a real person. Thank you.
Well, I, I'm happy to be here and to talk about this. I am opposed to the application. I think the planning and zoning has, their concerns are, are correct. Um, West Ada District currently has four high schools over capacity, one high school that's at capacity, and one high school that is under capacity, which is Meridian High School. Uh, the compass has projected future growth, and their map shows very little future growth in the proposed, near the proposed high school. They, um, why would we choose to build a high school so far from our current needs and projected growth areas when first, uh, the first concern on boundary committees is proximity? Like, how far am I gonna have to go to the high school? And so putting a new high school that's very far from everyone makes little sense. The district currently owns land that is the same size as the property that Centennial High School is located on, just under 40 acres. And it's at Eagle and Lake Hazel. Building a high school on that property would help the whole district because not only people who live south of the freeway, but there are many people who want to go to Meridian, or excuse me, Mountain View High School that live a mile or two north of the freeway, who are going to Centennial or, uh, Meridian High School. And there are many people going to Meridian that are south of the freeway that don't want to be. Those, uh, by moving, having another high school south of the freeway, it allows our high schools that are north of the freeway, uh, Centennial and Meridian to better serve the growth that's up there. Eagle, Rocky Mountain areas, uh, could all be better served by building a high school south of the freeway. It's a little counterintuitive, but if you look at the map and where they're served by, it makes a lot of sense. The, uh, the council is, um, approving this, uh, high school would drive more demand as has sort of already been seen when schools go up, be it elementary or high schools, more demand is in the area. It's further away from, uh, the current population, uh, so it doesn't, uh, make sense. The council's charged with doing that, which is good for the city and its citizens, approving this plan. Over the objections of planning and zoning would do a disservice to the existing and future citizens. Uh, West Ada has the option of building on Lake Hazel and Eagle. Uh, that's not a property that could easily have two access points, it's on a corner there, um, which, as you very well know, is much nicer. Uh, Rocky only has one access point, it's a nightmare getting in and out of there. Um, the, uh, they already own that property and it would much better serve the city. I urge the city to reject this application and encourage West Ada to build on the other property. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next is Bob Taunton.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor. Nice to see you. My name is Bob Taunton. My address is 2724 South Palmetier Way in Boise. And I'm here representing the property owners to the north of the school site. Um, you probably are aware, I think was in your packet, that they signed a memorandum of agreement with the school district last week indicating, well, taking on obligations, none from the, uh, from the school district, but all on the, um, the company. By the way, the, um, the name that's on the agreement is Heartland Townhomes Property Management. Uh, Mr. Allen mentioned Trilogy, those are related companies, so I'll just use the term Heartland. They owned and control approximately 110 acres, which basically, except for a small parcel, is all of the land north of the school up to McMillan, from the half-mile collector road over to McDermott, and of course includes the 300-foot setback for State Highway 16. Heartland's been in discussions with the, uh, with the school district for some time. Um, Heartland has also proposed, or has had a couple of pre-application meetings on the property that they own, about half of the total, 110 acres, uh, over the last couple of years. And as was stated this morning, or stated this evening, this morning, we had a pre-application meeting to talk about the entire property and how it might be planned and, and, um, meeting the requirements from ITD and ACHD and that sort of thing. Um, the commitment that Heartland has made is that with annexation, they would fully construct the road, the half-mile road from the north boundary of the school district's property all the way up to Heart, up to McMillan. That's about a $2 million cost item. It involves an extensive crossing, uh, structure of the five-mile, um, drain, and would be fully improved on, on the Heartland side, curb, gutter, sidewalk, and, um, connecting, providing that pedestrian connection all the way down from McMillan to the, to the, uh, school site. Uh, the other, the other, uh, reference in the MOA was the four-acre site that we have been discussing with the fire department and with the police department. Um, some time ago, we approached them to find out, you know, what's the issue about city services? What are, you know, what are some of the things you're thinking about? And during that discussion, there was a, um, a, a thought about maybe we could look at a fire station, a joint fire and police station, um, on, on the property that, um, Heartland controls. Um, so we, after several conversations and talking about different locations, a four-acre site was selected directly north of the, um, West Ada School Site. So be fronting on the half-mile collector. The idea was, we would donate two acres, the city would purchase two acres, and the, the size of the property is, um, thought to be four acres because it involves a maintenance facility as well as a, uh, fire station.
Mr. Taunton, you'll have to summarize.
Um, anyway, our summary is that we're happy to cooperate with the West Ada School District, we're happy to help them with their, um, secondary access, and we're happy to help them with the improvement in the fire, uh, response times and potentially a police station. Thank you very much. Available for questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Smiley, next.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Steve Smiley, 3662 East Granger, Meridian.
Thank you.
Um, I really appreciate, um, the work that the council's put into this. I, I want you to know that I'm really making a sacrifice to be here. It's one to nothing and I am on pins and needles, but maybe there's a comparison. We did not, the, the West Ada District did not make these plans under cover of darkness. We've been very open, all of it was subject to public hearings, all of it was in mailers. It was sent out to every resident of the district, not just residents of the city, but the entire district. All of us are agreed that the need is there. I, I want to repeat what I've done for 42 years, whenever I started a parent-teacher conference. Can we all agree that we're here for the benefit of these children and that we are on the same team? Can we all agree on that? We're all doing our best.
I think everyone has already stated that.
Great. Now, we were told to be proactive, to plan, which is precisely what the district did. We were proactive, we organized parent communities, we, we presented to everybody we knew. This, this property was, you know, has been there as a matter of public record forever. Well, not forever, but since we purchased it. And the, you know, the other thing is, we, we'll cooperate and we'll do everything we can. But remember, the money comes from the taxpayers, no matter which pot it comes out of. And so what we have to do is every penny that is spent by the school district to provide for these schools, that comes out of money that should and could be used for other purposes to educate children. We're not in the business of building fire stations and roads and sidewalks. We'll, we'll do what we can, we'll, we'll do what's asked of us, but that's, the money comes out of the same pot. And the idea of reimbursement is not a new idea. As a matter of fact, I've talked to people that go way, way back. I mean, when I was a kid, Meridian had 1,500 lonely souls and, you know, one high school and we all know the history. But the idea of reimbursement was done in one way or another in a lot of the schools that were built and have been built over the years, with Centennial, with Mountain View. And I, I can remember vividly, my children went to Centennial and all the work that had to be done to get that school open with the city of Boise. So this is not a new precedent. The reimbursement can be done. We, we want to be proactive, not reactive. And I guess this is one of those, no good deed goes unpunished, so we got proactive. We planned ahead, we did everything we thought we should be doing. And we're running into roadblocks. With that, Madam Mayor, Counsel, I will stand for questions. I have a lot more I could say.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Steve, you, you mentioned reimbursement, and I apologize if you were specific about which one. There's been a few different types of reimbursement for different things talked about tonight. What are you supposed to be talking about specifically?
Well, there have been agreements made as far as connecting the sewer, connecting the water, connecting roads. And the agreements have been, when the development comes in, that they will pick up their portion of what has been put up. That has been done in the past. I, I am not a lawyer, I'm not an expert on how those agreements were made, but I do know that there were agreements that were made in, in several cases. And I, I talked with Superintendent McClark, other people that were involved, and they all seemed to indicate that this is something that is not only possible, but has been done. And here again, I, you know, we can go into more details, but I don't want to belabor an issue. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, and Madam Mayor, and maybe yourself or Mr. Mayor or somebody. I, I know that that's been a topic of discussion a few times since I've been on council, that it was something that was a practice long before my time, latecomers fees, I think is what they were called or something. What was, can you remind us of the reasoning why we've gone away from doing that or avoiding it as a practice?
I can. Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilmember Palmer. So our ordinance changed a number of years ago because there was difficulty in trying to administer these types of agreements. And so we changed our ordinance a number of years ago and, and made them very, very limited. And since then, we've only had one, that, that was a reimbursement agreement, and that's the lift station that's north of this site. That is the only one that's fit under our ordinance because all of them, as Mr. Stewart stated, that all of the infrastructure that is being proposed is already contained in the sewer master plan. So when the property owner purchases the property, they know what the expectation is to be built around it, so we have not agreed to any reimbursement agreement since then. And as he stated, we've, we've had requests in the south near Hillsdale, we've had requests in the north, and we haven't done them for many, many years. So Mr. Smiley's correct, it was done in the past. It's been a, a number of years since we've done any of these in the city.
Madam Mayor. Mr. Mayor, so it would require an ordinance change to be able to do this one? Or is this one that could fit within the limited parameters of the?
Since they don't have an application in front of us, basically what they're proposing would not be reimbursable under our current ordinance.
Any further questions for Mr. Smiley? Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Really not a question, but we do appreciate you coming out here. And we talked about this before, but the, the district and the city cannot communicate too much, whether it's through this application or when there's not an application in front of us and come up with better ways to, you know, share ideas and proper long-term planning. So we've, we've discussed it, we don't want to lose sight of that. Appreciate you taking the time to come, share your thoughts. I know you sent email as well, so. Much appreciated.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Borton, I thoroughly agree. And I, I want everyone on the council to know, because I've talked with several of you, about a number of issues. And very much appreciate, and Mayor, we are so indebted to all the things you've done for the district, from showing up when we're dedicating a walking track to the hundreds of other things you do. Every one of those is noted and every one of those is appreciated. And if there's a silver lining to this dark cloud, the school is going to be called the storm after all. You know, if there's a silver lining, if, if anything that happens can improve that communication, I think that is an incredibly positive event for all of us. And, you know, I want you to know that as a member of the, the school board, I am absolutely ready, but also, I've been a citizen here a long, long time. I represent the 20% of the district that's in the city of Boise, but, you know, I, I do have portions that are in the city of Meridian as well. And it's, it's, it's no small challenge. Our meetings are on the same night. It's hard, but we've got to make the, we've got to make the action to get this to work together better because I think all of us, I, I know all of us are goodwill. The voters spoke very loudly, they wanted this school built. They see the need, the kids are there, they're coming. We have to get it done. And, you know, right now, you know, the thing about being a Cubs fan, I'm used to when we lose the game, there's always next season, and the school will be built, it may have to be built some, you know, some other way, but it's just going to delay the opening of it. And that is a big concern of mine, that, that this move forward in a timely procession. I don't think there's any problem that is not surmountable. I think we can solve this problem, let's, let's get to work and get it solved. Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you.
We appreciate your passion for the kids, and, and by the way, you can come and walk with me during the mayor's walking challenge all month. I'll, I'll be sending you my schedule.
Thank you. My knee surgery notwithstanding.
James Hunter is next.
Madam Mayor, if I could ask the council's indulgence, I'm Heath Clark, I represent Boise Hunter Homes, and Jim Hunter and I had both signed up. And I have a, a brief PowerPoint presentation, and we were hoping that I might be able to go first so that Jim might be able to refer to those images later. So if that would be okay, if we could just swap that order?
You bet.
Thank you very much. And I will be as quick as I can within my three minutes. So again, I'm Heath Clark, representing Boise Hunter Homes and Woodside Investors, 251 East Front Street in Boise, I'm with the law firm of Spink Butler. I want to say upfront that we do support the school district and its mission. We're developing a large project in, in the northern part of the county, and we're, we're donating a, an elementary school site to the district for free. We are, we want to see the district be successful, and, and we are generally in support of this application. We just need to have a, a conversation about a, a couple of items before it moves forward and try to refine the impact that this has on our application, or on our property. So just to, to help the, the council understand, this is a, a drawing of the way that our property is affected by the, the future development of State Highway 16 and the O.I.E. High School. You can see that the school site is on the west of the Woodside property, which is the property that is there in yellow. We're working proactively with the district, the city and ITD to try to make sure that this property isn't landlocked and has access to utilities in order to mitigate the, the actions of these, of the, of the public bodies here. We have two items for discussion. Again, once State Highway 16 is built, we expect that that western part of the property, this, this yellow, will be landlocked. As you know, both ACHD and the city have policies requiring that access be preserved, particularly along State Highway 16. This is a standard requirement of development applications, and I would refer the council to 113H4, which applies along State Highway 16, per 113H2, and requires onsite construction of streets. That's a standard requirement of development. It's something I believe you just required of the Compass Charter School, that they provide a cross-access on their site. As you know, ITD has developed a transportation corridor plan in connection with State Highway 16. Per their August 24th letter, they're concerned that the district site plan doesn't preserve the access for adjoining properties. Obviously, the, the information we've gotten today about the second access is a little bit different than this issue. While they have a preferred plan, their letter indicates that they are willing to consider alternatives. And these following two slides show the ITD preferred option. And the alternative that I understand staff is recommending and that we're supporting, in staff's recommended language, and I, and I heard Sonya loud and clear that it's not a condition of approval, so I'll try to be careful about that. So option one is based on the Highway 16 corridor plan and would acquire that north-south connection shown in red on this map. As I understand it, that's ITD's preferred alternative. Obviously, is a longer street section and would provide a circuitous route for the Flowers property, which is in the blue hatch, and the Boise Hunter Homes property. Option two is what staff has called, appears to be calling for, and what we are urging the city to adopt. This would be a backage road, shown in red, that would preserve access for the, the Woodside property, the Flowers property, and importantly, the district out parcel on the south, which we understand is slated for future development. With regard to-
Can you summarize, please?
I will do, I will do that.
Thank you.
So with regard to Mr. Allen's comments, we have not seen the language of the condition of approval that was up on your screen tonight. The proposal does not appear to give us access, it appears to go just into the Flowers property, onto an ampere Meridian irrigation district easement. So at a minimum-
I'll have to cut you off now.
If I could just make one brief point, Madam Mayor, and this is with regard to the sewer, and it would be in response to a comment that Mr. Allen made. The sewer, we've had conversations with the city engineer this morning, and the city engineer is in agreement with allowing us to connect to the, the termination point that, excuse me, that the, the school district is showing that I have on this map in orange.
Okay, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
This is kind of a important aspect of it, maybe we can keep going with some staff comments too on it?
On, you have questions for Warren?
If you have, yes. Warren, do you have any comments? What would you like to say, Warren, is my question.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, so there has been some discussion. So when the school district originally came in, we, we did require them to bring the sewer and the water to their site. The sewer is coming in from the north and going, coming down their site to serve the school. The master plan, actually, the 40-acre parcels, it's about 40 acres before the highway, the Highway 16 bisects it, so it's the, the one in yellow that you see. The master plan calls for it to be served off the McDermott trunk that will come down McDermott Road. We did an analysis to determine whether or not it could be served from the school district, from the line that's coming in from the school district, and determined that from a hydraulic standpoint, that it can, and that because of the location of the Highway 16 and its potential to bisect that site and make access to the McDermott Road, it's, it can still happen, because it can come from the property to the north or it can come through Eustick Road. We, but we determined that essentially it could gain access to the school district site. We weren't going to require the school district to extend it there because the master, there were other ways that more closely aligned with the master plan, that it can get access. But if they were able to work out an agreement with this, with the school district to extend that sewer from the school district line to that site, there was no reason from a feasibility standpoint that that could not occur. So I did send a, after having conversations with my staff, running the sewer model, also talking with Bruce Freckleton, we did let them know that we are not opposed to that option if they can work some sort of a deal to make that happen.
Do you have another question?
Yeah. Is there anything else you'd like to say? I don't know, I was, you want me to ask it, but this is, I don't know, a pretty significant point.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Palmer, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that we, we would like to be able to connect to that via an agreement with the West Ada School District. I believe everyone was on board with that. That the information that we had received from the city engineer's office previously indicated that would not be possible. Obviously, that's been updated now.
Awesome.
Mr. Borton?
Madam Mayor, just a question, Heath. On the, the road issue you've raised, it, it seems as though the, you've got adequate access to Eustick in consideration of this current application, and there might be a future action by another governmental entity that might impact whether or not you become landlocked, which they would have to address. But it, it seems a bit cart before the horse to, you know, position that the district's application landlocks you, when it doesn't, it's perhaps the future installation, that if that were to go forward at a future date, very well might cause the access issues. Am I characterizing that fair?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, yes, I, I, I understand the point, for sure. The city code clearly has an intent to preserve right-of-way along the proposed State Highway 16 route. And the, the understanding there is that ultimately, those properties are going to be cut off potentially. And so when it, when development applications come through, the city per code preserves right-of-way and requires access connections in order to mitigate the impact of that future action. But I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Borton. It hasn't happened today, but the city code already recognizes that fact that it is coming down the line and does require those types of actions.
Madam Mayor, it's not that the city code, the city code doesn't require that east-west access that you're requesting. Would you agree?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, it doesn't call out this specific one, but it does state that, that access should be preserved and cross-access should be provided from the, the State Highway 16 to the mid-mile collectors.
Madam Mayor, in a, in a north-south, parallel to the highway?
It says generally.
Yeah.
Generally, parallel to the highway, but in this case, where we have a, a property that's going to be landlocked, otherwise, this is the, that's the only other option.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is James Hunter with Boise Hunter Homes, 1132 East Laguna Shore Lane, Eagle, Idaho is my address. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Members of the Council, I'll try to be fairly short. We are pro-schools. We're donating a seven-acre elementary school site to this school district for free on another project, probably, you know, the offer's out there, it's been, in the next year or two, they'll probably take that. So we're pro-school. We just want equal treatment for this project as the same we're required to provide when we go develop adjacent to other property owners. We've owned this property for 11 years. I think the Idaho Department of Transportation did their EIR on Idaho 16 about four to five years ago, went through, was certified, major public comment, paid for public hearings, had the preferred alignment, they built the first leg. So we could play games and suggest that it's not going to be extended further north, but we all know it is. So the school district has owned that land for about maybe nine months, and they knew it was coming, and they did it, they did a design that virtually landlocks our parcel, okay? If this is a grade-separated interchange here, or there's any grade separation there, we don't know the land of the north, we don't know that we're, we're, we're cut off from Eustick, potentially we get a right-in, right-out if the grade isn't separated too much, but in reality, we're landlocked, okay? Every project we have in this city, we're always required to extend the road through and to our neighbors, even though they're competitors of ours. So at Sky Mesa, I'm extending roads to two competing property owners on both sides of us. Our cost, our expense, we're not asking for anything else. And so these policies that are, we're asked to abide by and routinely are in professional courtesy in our industry, we're just asking that of the school district. And so we'd just like to be provided that. And so we'd just like to be provided that, so our property doesn't get landlocked. We had a 40-acre parcel. Unfortunately for us, it's going to have a fragment of 15 acres on the west side of it. We'd just like that fragment not to be landlocked. We think the school district should extend that road through. They bought that other piece, they call it the remainder piece or something, for commercial purposes with taxpayers' money, so they're speculating on it. It's either going to be commercial or residential. It'll need an access. It'll need a backage road. Just build it, you know? And that's what we're asking for, plain and simple, not be landlocked. So that's the extent of my comment. I'm open for any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Because nobody's tired of hearing from me tonight. I've got a question for Sonia. Sonia, is it safe to say that if this were to be just a single-family home development on this parcel, that there's little doubt that there would be a stub street to that property, just from the beginning planned?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Palmer, Councilman, let me answer your question, yes. But to further explain, Section 11-3A-3 of our Unified Development Code, the intent of that section of code is to improve safety by combining and/or limiting access points to collector and arterial streets, ensuring that motorists can safely enter all streets. So divisions must provide local street access to any use that currently takes direct access from an arterial or collector street. So that's the reason for the requirement for the stub street to this property.
Thanks.
Because the only access they have is from Eustick, which is an arterial street.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
My phone, thank you.
Mike Wheatonay.
Hello, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Mike Wheatonay. I live at 2235 Southeast Fifth Way in Meridian, Idaho. I'm also a trustee of the West Ada School District, formerly referred to as the Meridian District, but that's not the conversation we're having right now. So first, I would like to thank the mayor and the city council members, both past and present, for the many years of collaboration and partnerships. Someone finally declared nationally that we, something that we already knew. We live in one of the best cities in America, and I also think that we have one of the best school districts in America as well. I am truly grateful for the many years and successful efforts of our cities and our school district. We have seen unprecedented partnerships on so many projects, with the culmination of the hill manifesting that when we work together, the sky is the limit for our community, families, and kids. I'm here before you for the first time in my almost 18 years of service as a school board member. Why? Because we need your help. The decision you make tonight is important and vital to the needs of our kids and the families of our community. Over the past 20 years, we have built 22 schools, 13 elementary schools, five middle schools, four high schools, at a total cost of $440,300,000. I think it speaks volumes that this is the first time, as board members, we are here asking for consideration and help in this much-needed annexation for the Oaihee School Project. We have become rather efficient in projecting growth and looking to the future needs, which we must project and then deliver in real time. We have patron bond committees, whom on average spend a combined 400 to 500 hours of time making these decisions, looking at all the data, everything that is presented, and looking to the future need of our district. The location was extensively and thoroughly vetted. Finally, we do not live in a perfect world, especially when it comes to growth and planning. The city and the district are planning the best we can to meet our current and future needs of our residents in our community. It is inevitable that we may bump into each other from time to time. We are hoping that you can keep this bump from turning into a big trip for what we're doing in our plans, to meet the needs of our districts and our community. I have some comments on Swiss cheese, but I'll hold those if I have more time. But that being said, we look to your leadership in hopes of an approval for this much-needed annexation. So if I have a little more time, which I don't, I'd like to really express about the safety and the Swiss cheese comments, but I can't do that unless you ask me a question. So it looks like I have 10 seconds left. So-
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I will stand for questions, if you have any.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burt.
Safety.
Safety. Yeah, that probably is one of our biggest concerns as well. With the growth and as much as it's happening, as Mr. X-line expressed, and the costs of a new fire station, with those thousands of plotted maps, it's going to come more income. We're going to have more monies to meet the needs of these plotted communities that are coming in. We will indeed have to build another fire department out there, and I think that is something that the fire department has expressed, that they're much in favor of it. It would be a perfect place to put it, to beat the needs of our city in the future. Safety is a big issue. I've talked to our folks, the police and fire. While there are concerns, I think we've alleviated those concerns. I think we can solve those issues about access. I think that response time, whether it's, if it's two or three or five minutes more, obviously, that's a problem. But I don't think that's going to be a problem for a long time. I think in the near future, and I think if this was three to five years down the road, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We'd be annexed without question, and there we would be moving forward. This particular school will serve our district for another 100 years. It is something that we are very confident, as a board, that will serve the needs of our community. So I know it's not a perfect thing, and I know safety's an issue, but I think we can solve these issues. And I think as a school district and a city, that we should work hand in hand to make sure that we do what's best, because in three to five years, this is going to look like a brilliant decision you made tonight. Right? Because there'll be a lot of folks that are going to appreciate what's going to be happening there. And I'd like to see it built in Meridian. I'd like to see the economy and all of the good things that come from that in the city of Meridian, rather than perhaps another city for right now. But it is the best place. So concerning safety, I think we can respond. I think we have fire departments and police departments that will be very cognizant of the fact when we're having football games and things like that. So I think we'll be okay in that situation. Certainly, if I thought that these kids were not going to be safe, I would have been the first one to say, no. No, we can't do that. So that's my answer to the safety, to the safety issue. I think it's solvable, and solvable in the near term. We're not talking five, 10, 15 years.
Thanks, Mike.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it?
There's no Swiss cheese question.
No Swiss cheese comments?
No.
Not even about a sandwich?
I was going to ask a Swiss cheese question.
Okay. All right, thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, members of the council.
Next is Kristy Sterns.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kristy Sterns. I live at 4374 North Heritage View Avenue in Meridian.
Thank you.
I have a few comments. It's in support of the school. I'm a parent of three children in the school district. My son was signed up to go to Rocky Mountain High School. I opted to transfer him to Centennial High School, rather than have him bused to the overcrowded Rocky Mountain High School. I drive him every day to Centennial. Few different reasons. No desire to have him in overcrowded classrooms, the sports teams, you've got 100 kids trying out for 15 positions. It's just not fair to our children. The continued overcrowding at Rocky Mountain is not only detrimental to the kids, it's detrimental to the students, our educators that we rely heavily upon. Heritage Middle School is overcrowded at McMillan and Meridian, yet we continue to approve developments on nearly every corner in that section of Meridian. I live there, I can attest to it, I drive by it every day. To me, we approve these multi-unit apartment complexes right across from these middle schools that are already having to bring in portable units. We're not helping the school district any. I think it's our responsibility, your responsibility, to enact, if you're not going to approve this high school, we need to do some sort of emergency moratorium on additional residential building permits, because we are asking for the school district to be more involved, yet I don't see the school district being consulted every time we approve permit after permit. We're creating the problem, they're trying to find a solution for it, and we're trying to nix that solution. To me, it's like the field of dreams. If you build it, they will come. We obviously have heard from many people testifying tonight that there is a commitment there from all different agencies, all different organizations, to make this happen with access and infrastructure. I'm just going to Cliff Notes version it for you. This is going to be a bad idea for Meridian residents and our children. The growth is happening that way. It's not happening, it's going to happen on the south side of Overland. It's happening out there. But to build a school over at Lake Hazel, that does not solve the issue that we have over on this side. The development is going to spread out towards McDermott, so we need to plan ahead of time. We cannot blame the school district for not building it somewhere else, because they've made it clear that they do not have the ability, they don't have land anywhere else. To me, that's where the growth is going, that's where we need to build, and we need to support the school district the best that we can. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Eric Thies, or Ties. You'll have to let me know which.
My name is Eric Thies. You were close, though. I live at-
Not really.
No, no. Trying to be sympathetic. I live at 2064 East Meadowwood Drive in Meridian, Idaho. I'm also the president of the West Ada Education Association. So I work in every building. I have members in every building across the entire district, including the area that we're affected by. I've taught at Rocky Mountain High School for 10 years, and until you've sat at the intersection, at the top of the stairs and the hallways at Rocky Mountain during passing period and seen the overcrowding, you do not understand the overcrowding, until you've seen the cars trying to leave the school, due to the fact that there's over 600 more students in the school and 400 more cars than were ever planned for. You don't understand the problems with overcrowding. And so I invite you to go to those schools and see that firsthand, if you haven't done that yet. However, that was not going to be my comment. My comment was more about the conditions that were sent out by the Planning and Zoning Commission, or rather, the draft conditions that were out there. And in my mind, it broke into three categories, and through communication with folks on the staff, those concerns have been clarified for me, and it seems that they break into three categories. The first is safety, and I'm not going to address that, because lots of other people already have. We understand the concerns, we understand the solutions that have been presented in the district's plan and in their revised draft conditions. I don't even know what to call those. But in that document, they've addressed those safety concerns, to the point where, if I'm understanding things right, police and fire are content with the plan. The second concern, and no district wants to build a school that's not safe, no teacher wants to work in a school that's not safe. And so if I didn't think the school was going to be safe, I wouldn't recommend approving this. I'm convinced the school will be safe. The second is access, and again, with the district's plan, with the help from the property to the north, those access concerns are going to be alleviated. And the third is location. I've heard a lot of talk about the sprawl and the Swiss cheese and the leapfrog building and all of those kinds of things, and I don't have a good sandwich joke, sorry, Mike. But I do want to talk about the need for a school in that area. That area wasn't picked quickly. It was thought over. There was consideration for the comprehensive plan in Meridian City. We're not just looking at students in Meridian City as West Ada. We serve students in Star as well, and with the land they just annexed, we need a school that will serve those students as well as the students in Meridian. When you look at where it's overcrowded in Rocky and Eagle, soon to be overcrowded in Meridian in the next few years, building a school south of the interstate doesn't make sense to serve those students. And building a school in Star will mean students will have to be bused pretty much from Meridian High School and Rocky Mountain borders to Star, which isn't good for students either. Sorry, my time's up. It is that location, and the overcrowding is what creates the urgency that's necessary here, that you're feeling from everybody that's planning. Putting this out three years instead of two years doesn't seem like that big of a deal, until you work and learn in those schools that are overcrowded. It's a very big deal to those students, it's a very big deal to those teachers, and the urgency is real. And so I would, on behalf of all the teachers and the students and staff and custodial staff and administrators that I've talked to and worked for for a decade now, I beg you to approve this tonight, even if it's with conditions.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Sorry. With that, I guess I'm finished.
Any questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you for your letter that you sent us.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, David Ferdinand.
Welcome to Ada County.
Thank you, thank you. My name is David Ferdinand. I'm at 2419 West Heron Loop in Nampa, and Mayor DeVeard, and council. It is good to be in Meridian. I am representing a client, Frank and Gwen Baum. They're at 4343 West Eustick Road, and I've covered up the, whoop, can you get me back, Sonia? Thank you. This is this property right here, and you can see what happens with this property with Highway 16, and they are directly across the street from the new high school location. And what an exciting opportunity for Meridian. I think this is tremendous. You know, it just takes money to fix all of these things. And obviously, Meridian is growing. What I'm bringing you is the Canyon County side of this. This property that I just showed you is in Canyon County. It's in the West Ada School District. They send their students to all these schools, and this particular property is in favor of the new Oaihee School. My client's home, two rental houses, a shop, and 76-acre farm, which has been home since 1975, and their property is in the pathway of the development, including the proposed school expansion, Arturo Road widening, the extension of Highway 16. The ITD plan includes an access road from Highway 16. If you can see this, it goes right across the front of their $700,000 home, and a couple of rentals with a nice little access road there. Their land is in the impact area of Nampa. I can tell you, having had some experience with impact areas and how counties and cities set these up, we know that at some point in time, somebody's going to have to pay for the sewer and the water, for the services that it takes to expand these areas. What we are suggesting is that you add one more part of the community. Back in 1892, when Ada County citizens voted to have Canyon County formed out of Ada County, this property was in Ada County. So was the city of Nampa, by the way, in 1891. The-
We don't want Nampa. Thank you. I mean, love Nampa, but I don't want to annex Nampa.
Well, here's what we're asking. We certainly would add to the financial development if you would even consider annexing the south side of the street. We would certainly bring that much-needed development that everyone is talking about, that would bring more funding for the situation. I think, you better check the record, I think it was even part of Ada County back in the 90s at one point in time. Let me complete. As the area develops, they would appreciate being considered for the provision of water and sewer and even being annexed into the city of Meridian, to allow- annexed into the city of Meridian to allow their property to be developed. This would help defray costs to the proposed West Ada School District and open this area. With staff suggested conditions to approve roads, widen, and improve access, we believe this is the best time to develop this area.
Thank you.
I'll stand for questions, even about the annexation of Nampa, if you want.
Yeah, Mayor Kling would not appreciate us for that.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Jeremiah Brown.
Good evening. Either one.
Either one. My name's Jeremiah Brown. I live at 12064 West Fiddler Drive in Boise, man of mayor, council. My kids go to West Ada. I was on that committee that Eric Exine talked about. I even have a map of all of the proposed lots that have been approved by not only this city, but Eagle and Star and Boise and Kuna, where they're going to start building these houses. It was a very tough decision for us to figure out where we were going to put this high school. But in the end, there really was no other choice. This is where all the lands are going to be, and I don't want to point fingers, I really don't, but you guys are approving these lands and they have no control over it. And no one really does. I mean, the developers are buying land as fast as they can buy it. They're going to build houses as fast as they can, and we're going to end up with 78,000 to 92,000 students in our district within the next 20 or so years. That's over double what we have now. And I know you guys are looking at this particular school, but by the time my one-year-old gets into high school, there's going to be two more high schools. There's going to be two more middle schools, and I don't even know how many elementary schools are going to be built by the time he gets into high school. And I think the conditions that Planning and Zoning has is valid. I think that the revised draft, I think, works really well. And my main suggestion would be, I know that the council has said it, I know that Mike Wheatney has said it in trustee meetings, maybe you guys should have some sort of third party that talks to each other. Because I know that I came in here and handed out business cards for a website that has all of this information on it to council members. I got five of the six mayors to allow me to put endorsements on our website. I even got- Exine and I got Meridian and Boise, the Business Association for them to endorse it. And so I was at his town hall meeting when he was there. So when I've had district people tell me that certain people in Planning and Zoning or council didn't know what was going on, it really surprises me that this isn't, there isn't more communication. And maybe this should be a lesson to not only the district, but also the city council and everyone, that you guys should have some sort of, maybe a third-party person or someone that's hired by the city or hired by the district to talk to the six area or the six cities that are all a part of this district. We need better communication. But I still think, regardless of going forward, this is a problem we have to face now. And you guys can check that website. Again, it's boostwestada.com, and you'll see all of the houses that need to be built here, or that are going to be built here. But yeah, other than that, I really think this should be, this should go through, and even if you have to do conditions.
Thank you, Jeremiah. And I would just note, so, number one, yeah, we didn't know it was right there. And I heard where it was first proposed. If it was just bought nine months ago, this hasn't been something that's been long-term. But you'll see a little bit of what we're dealing with right now.
Oh, yeah, it looks like a lot.
Have you heard? So the minute, we have a growth driver. Schools are growth drivers. We now have the land to the north, the land to the east, and now the land to the south. I want to develop because this is being proposed. We weren't ready to develop here. We've been trying to keep growth on the east side of this land or line, so we didn't have all of this. And yes, there is a need for a high school. That's why we were all on board. But this is what has been the concern. Because we can't serve what has already been built, now we're going to have growth pressures in four square miles as well. Therein lies the biggest concern. And now you're stretching our police and fire into areas that we don't have facilities and service levels. So it's more complex than just a dot on a map.
Definitely.
And that's my only point to it.
Perhaps we should also look at more impact fees for hastening some of this growth.
Well, if trustee Wheatney and I would have anything to say to it, we've been to the legislature for almost two decades now, Mike. We still can't get growth impact fees for schools. It's not allowed by the state law. So-
We'll just have to keep working on it.
We're on it, but-
We'll just have to keep working. But thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylan.
Real quickly, this is not really a question, more of a statement, because it's something I've heard a couple of times, a little bit in our defense. When we have an application for a development, it does go to the school district. And the school district looks at it, and they have an opportunity to respond to us, so that when we have a meeting, a hearing like this, we can see the school district's response. And never has it said, "We cannot take these students into schools." It sometimes says it will cost money, and it would be nice to have some money to help support it, or, you know, this is the impact that it will have. But never have they said, "If you develop this, we will not have the capacity to place those students." And therefore, we cannot deny an application for that reason. So it's a lot to take in, and to those of you who don't do this every day, just kind of consider that. We're not just throwing developments out there. When they come to us, we can't deny it for that reason if we don't have a concrete reason from the district.
Well, and just to the district's defense, they cannot deny access to education. And so it's a vicious circle. I did want to note that, too.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next is Josh Cormier.
Good evening.
Hey, thanks for having us.
Thank you for being here.
I am, my name's Josh Cormier. I'm a Realtor representing a client who owns the property at 4,000 North McDermott Road, who is very in favor of the building of the school. In the 2017 Meridian Annual Report, the word "family" is used 11 times. 93% of residents surveyed in the report say that the city exceeds expectations as a place to raise a family. Meridian is a family city, and families want to move here. The three highest priorities, according to the report for the residents surveyed, are transportation, education in schools, growth and development. Oaihee High School answers two of the city's highest priorities: growth and development, education in schools. The client we're here representing today owns a single-family home on a seven-acre parcel currently under contract for sale to a developer who intends to live in the home with his family prior to developing it after the school is built. If the school is built, according to the city's development map or the master plan, city services will end at the edge of his property line. This transaction and transactions like it will come to a halt and die if the school does not continue, effectively ending major opportunities for growth and development in that area. I won't educate you on the Coleman Homes reimbursement agreement, because I know you're all familiar, but the result of the reimbursement agreement is that the next developer in the area must pay $312,000 to update the lift station and $265 per unit to reimburse Coleman Homes. This is highly cost-prohibitive, particularly for smaller developments like ours. Cost-prohibitive to begin with, and canceling the school and city services may kill development altogether. Between 2010 and 2017, Meridian's population grew by an average of 3,249 people per year. So growth is not only on the way, it is here, and will require additional emergency services to be put in place regardless. I know that's a more complex issue than I'm aware. Putting the school closer to congestion presents its own set of safety issues. When Mountain View High School was built, the area around it was barren of development. When Rocky Mountain High School was built, the area around it was barren of development. So to parody the mother from earlier, Meridian wants families to move here, build it, and they will come. Since I have 50 seconds left, Councilman Ty Palmer.com and I went to high school together. Funny enough, we were 2006, 2007, both most likely to be a politician in the yearbook. And here I am, a lowly social dropout Realtor, and here you are, living your dream. And I just want to say, I'm very, very proud of you, and I've really enjoyed everything you've said today. But as you recall, I know you've mentioned it, I appreciate that, the congestion issue driving into Mountain View High School at the time was a fiasco, so as, you know, idiot kids, if you overslept that day and tried to get to school, it was like 30 minutes to get inside. And I wonder what that kind of congestion would look like if you built a high school closer to the, you know, what's already developed, and how that would look, and if it doesn't expand the safety issues with respect to the greater population.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
I knew there had to be a comment there, right? Mr. Palmer.
So the real history is, I was, despite being highly unpopular in high school, somehow I was voted most likely to be president and also most likely to be a CEO. So they told me to just pick one. So naturally, you know, free market, I picked the CEO guy, so they took my picture in a suit, whatever. But I had one president as well. But because I do prefer business and my family, this will be my only term on council. But call it a dream. You spend four years here and-
All that aside, I know it's ridiculous and personal, but it's been a long time, and it's good to see you.
We should catch up.
See you later.
Kathy Wright, next. Let's see Kathy. Sue Darden? Otis Darden? Darren Truchot? Heather McDonald? Sherry Belnap? And with that, Madam Mayor, members of the council, that concludes those that indicated that they wish to testify. Those that signed up and indicated that they did not wish to testify or did not mark that box saying you wish to testify, your names will be entered into the record, signifying your favor or opposition.
I would open this up. Is there anyone who wishes to testify whose name wasn't read? Go here, and then we'll go in the back. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
David Clayton, 7004 West Ring Perch Court, Boise, Idaho. Madam Mayor, council members. I work, I'm represented for the South Cole Neighborhood Association, so I deal with the city of Boise often. I know Bob Toneman, Mr. Tucker from Saronga and other developments. I'm trying to decide how to say this.
Just say it.
I, it concerns, I've been in a lot of these. I've participated in them, I've watched them and listened to them. And as you noted, it's very unusual for so much council member discussion prior to public testimony and applicant testimony. Concerned there's a little bit of prejudgment in this particular application before the sides were heard, some of the comments since then. As far as the houses and the development, I've looked at the developments and the permits that are out there, and we talk about this plan that we have to, for the road for Hunter Homes, and, you know, we need to prepare or plan in the future. I think a lot of these approvals for the permits and housing that have been done didn't have in mind the preparation, maybe the precedent that's there for the school. I don't see a plot or a site closer inside, it wasn't sprawl, for the city of Meridian for a school. There's a lot of houses that are approved, but there hasn't been a plot or an area preserved for the school to be done. So you've pretty much given them no options to service your city and to service the new homes that are there. In addition to that, I work in construction myself. We just barely finished working on the Bonneville School District project, the Thunder Ridge High School, and it is out in the same type of situation, exactly the same situation just outside of developments that this school is, and it's going to be a great success. It was overwhelmingly supported. The impact fees that we've talked about, they don't have to be applied to the school. For example, that road that Boise Hunter wants, well, it can be applied as the impact for the development of the homes that are going into the future area south of the school and the Boise Hunter area, or the Saronga, or the Trilogy, sorry, the Trilogy development north of it. All these things can be used in the future when you guys approve, if you annex or zone those areas. I think, and as one of the other members or people testified, that will slow down the growth. I understand that you guys have a ton of homes coming in. The problem is, is you haven't left the school district any options other than this, to serve what you guys have approved already. And I get it, you get people, it meets all the criteria, staff approves it because it meets all the criteria. I understand all of that, but you haven't left them any recourse. And as far as the safety goes, I do think that they've mitigated it. I really do. I don't think that we have issues that you might have had before. And I'll conclude with that. Joe.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Not a question, just a brief comment. I think, from my perspective, what I've seen with lots of the council comments early is they're very well-prepared. I think the hundreds of emails and the hundreds of pages of staff reports and analysis have been reviewed prior to today, and they're prepared.
I appreciate that, and I can understand that that's part of it. The developments, for example, Saronga was very prepared, had multiple hearings. We even postponed the original hearing because we weren't ready. It feels like we're not ready for this hearing, to be honest with you. It feels like that first hearing we were going to have is Saronga, where we weren't ready, and we deferred it because we weren't ready.
Madam Mayor? What ways do you think we're not ready?
The draft provisions. We don't have them done yet.
Are you talking-
They've been edits to the potential conditions of approval.
So are you talking about the conditions of approval?
Well, I'm saying you have all these issues, the safety, you have the access, you have all that stuff. The, Mr. Borton's very legitimate concern that, hey, we've got a potential that we're going to do this here and get funding for it with access fees, but it's a maybe. Just like it's a maybe that 16 is going to go in, we think it's going to happen, but it's still a maybe. So you have all these things that were valid concerns that have been put, concerns by staff, that have been then followed up by applicant, and those weren't ironed out before we sit here. And then we have a whole bunch of discussion, and you have half of the people that signed up that leave, they don't get to testify because it happens in the front end, and then we didn't get the public discussion.
I would just say, the people that signed up, signed up online. They didn't have to be here in person. So, and once we signed, we added the sign-up online to facilitate. It also makes it easier to sign up and not show up. So-
I appreciate that.
I would caution you on that assumption. But I think, public hearings, you're not supposed to come here with your mind made up. You're supposed to come here with an open mind. Looking at the application in advance, there were some issues, and the school district came prepared with information that said, "We're working those through." The date was set, and it cannot be moved. So you hear the testimony, and they don't have to make a decision tonight. What is Saronga, anyway?
It's a 1,200-home subdivision that's going in south Boise by Coal Road and Lake Hazel.
Okay, sorry.
It's a billion-dollar project.
Don't follow the Boise City Council stuff.
Being in the South Cole Neighborhood Association, I kind of sort of have to. Which is West Ada.
Thanks for the comments.
Idaho.
Fair enough, thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
What's that?
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Tiara Bowe, I live at 955 West Great Basin Drive in Meridian, 83646.
Thank you.
I have four sons in the West Idaho School District, and I am also a public education teacher. I did not plan on providing comment tonight, however, I do feel very invited, so thank you, and even compelled to do so, so thank you for taking public opinion tonight. I request that our city's council echo the past opinions and continue to support the notion that we should build our city from the inside out, not from the outside in, and certainly not on speculative promises from builders whose lens is about business and profit, and not through a lens focused on the safety and considerations of children. And there have been blatant assumptions that taxpayers would be willing to pay for sewer, infrastructure, and a fire station that hasn't even been on the radar until this very evening. I do respectfully disagree with Mr. Smiley regarding the bond transparency. If the bond had been transparent with a clear picture regarding traffic and life safety concerns, I don't know that the bond would have passed. And again, those taxpayer expectations for infrastructure, sewer, and a fire station that hasn't been talked about before this evening, that bond may not have passed. Regarding safety, I don't feel, as a mother or a teacher, that concerns have been alleviated by painting a picture of what could be a fix. My stomach does drop watching that first responders video and knowing that times, average times, to provide response to the students at that school would be greater than average at the current time, maybe not in the future, but at the current time. It's really hard to wrap our brains around what we don't want to believe happened and what we pray every night will not happen in our schools and hope that we don't have a mass trauma injury at our schools. But what would be the consequences of something like that happening before the first responders are there, the infrastructure's there, and we're ready to be all together in this new infrastructure? I just ask that you don't put students and teachers in that position. Thank you.
Mike? And then, sir, I'll get to you next.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members, my name's Mike Harano, I'm the principal at Rocky Mountain High School.
Mike, do you want to pull that closer? There you go.
How about like that?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm the principal at Rocky Mountain High School, 5450 North London Road. We talk about safety, and we talk about our kids. As a principal, I can tell you, that is the number-one thing that we look at, no matter what goes on. When we build a school, when we start to design these plans, safety is the number-one thing. And I know that, for me, as a principal, I better be looking at that. So, I know that when we build this school, that will be the number-one consideration, is to take care of the kids and to make sure that it is safe. The piece I want to talk about is that Rocky Mountain is, what, 2433, that's how many kids we have right now. And we've been averaging 60, 70, 80 kids a year. If we keep holding off, I'm going to be above 2,500, close to 2,600. That's a safety issue for me at my school. I need help. I need another school built. If you wait, if you put it down on Lake Hazel and that area, it doesn't help me. If you go down Eagle, it doesn't help me. I have too many kids. I need relief. My subdivision community needs relief. We talk about, just about every day, about the number of kids who have to go through this subdivision. With the elementary schools right there, parents are worried that, oh, we have new high school kids who are driving, they're going to hit my kid. You know, we have kids parking in the subdivision because there's no more room in the parking lots. And so, as it gets bigger and bigger, I don't have room. So, I can't keep my community safe, and I can't keep my kids safe. So, my biggest plea to you is, to consider that also, not only as a building, but why that location is really good right now, at least from a personal level in regards to my school, that's the one that would give me the greatest relief and the greatest help, and will help take care of our kids in that fashion. Any questions?
So, Mike, I guess, I know you need relief, I've been in the halls, and like Eric said, it's crazy. Why don't you redraw boundaries and put more to Meridian High? We live closer to Meridian High, we're in Rocky Mountain High School boundaries, and it just didn't quite make sense because they split us down the road. But for now, I do understand you're overcrowded and that Meridian High has room.
I agree with that, but I also worry about, which happens before, you redo boundaries, and then when you decide where our new school is going to go or adjust, you have to redo boundaries again. That doesn't help families when kids are moved at one time, then have to be moved again, because boundaries have to be redrawn in regards to where they're located. The one that's over there on the side does help out the most, I believe.
I had kids that went to three, one child that went to three elementary schools, two middle schools, and two high schools, and we didn't move. So, I do know what you're saying.
It's tough on kids, right.
Any questions for Mr. Harano?
Madam Mayor, I have one question.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mike. When your school was originally built, what was the capacity this school was built for?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, so it's the exact same amount of, you know, kiddos that will be at this new high school. Okay, perfect.
This one, and then Denise in the back, and then over here.
My name is Sean Birch, I live at 4809 Bronze Spur Drive, Nampa, Idaho. Madam Mayor, council. As I just explained, we live in Nampa, we actually live in Canyon County, not actually in the city of Nampa. We're at Star Road and Cherry Lane, between Eustick and Cherry Lane, and between Star Road and McDermott. We're directly in the impact area of this high school. As I said, we're in, we are actually in Canyon County, but the property that's directly north of our neighborhood, which is Silver Spur Ranch, the property directly to the north of that has either been annexed or is approved for annexation into the city of Nampa, and is approved for housing development of approximately 850 homes.
Wow.
That is not in the city of Meridian, it's not Ada County, but it's West Ada School District. My wife and I and our family moved to Meridian into Kelly Creek Subdivision near Ten Mile and McMillan in 2006. In 2008, I wrote you a nasty email, Mayor.
Thank you.
About...
I love those.
About Selway Apartments that was going to be built directly to the south, and I was very surprised to get a personal phone call from you in response to my email, and you very eloquently laid out the reasons why, you know, it looked like approval, or why it looked like these things might happen, and I really appreciate that, and I'll always remember that. Now, I don't live, I'm not one of your constituents because I don't live in the city, however, your decision here tonight has a great effect on me and my family, living in Canyon County. We support this high school. We were in Kelly Creek Subdivision when Rocky Mountain was opened in 2008 or 2009. I remember at that time that there were not contiguous sidewalks all over the place, there weren't sidewalks, there wasn't the development on the northeast corner of Linder and McMillan. There were great areas of, you know, of concern also, I think, similar, you did have Loxa Falls and Paramount that were developing already, but there was a lot of areas along the major roads that hadn't been developed, and there weren't sidewalks. That stuff happened over time. I sense a great deal of reluctance on your part, Mayor, to allow development to happen on the west side of the city, or on this west end, and have it fill in. It's going to happen. Bridgetower West is developing from Ten Mile to Black Cat. There's also the subdivision directly to the north of that, Bain Bridge, that's going that same mile block. Oak, the Oaks, Oak Creek subdivision is going from Black Cat all the way to McDermott. You know, that, I believe, is all approved all the way to McDermott. These are enormous subdivisions with incredible numbers of homes that are going in. My kids, I have two kids right now that are still at Rocky Mountain, because when we moved in 2011, they were allowed to be grandfathered in, and they stayed at Rocky, and we've appreciated Rocky, but I have two children in elementary school right now that will be able to go to this new high school if it's built where it's proposed. I drive Eustick every day.
Can you summarize?
Yeah, am I out of time? I drive that stretch of Eustick almost every day. I'm a federal law enforcement officer, I'm a first responder. I appreciate what the fire department has said about wanting a fire station there, that's great, and I appreciate the concerns with the city. I believe that that's been resolved. It will be safe for our kids, I'm a parent, and I'm in the impact area, and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just a question for you. Say you had kids that were going to be going to this school, and I have no idea how long it might take to actually have a fire station there. Say it's 10 years from now. Are you comfortable, it's not something I'm going to have to deal with, I mean, I live two miles south of Mountain View, so my kids will probably go to Centennial. Really glad I got a laugh. Thank you. So, me not having to be in this situation, would you, as a parent, be comfortable with knowing there's not going to be a fire station there when my kids are there? It's going to happen eventually, but...
I am, and I'll tell you why. As a law enforcement officer, my bigger concern is a law enforcement response. When I look at incidents that have happened in the recent past in this country, the mass trauma incidents have been law enforcement-related and not natural disaster or, you know, fire trauma-type events, where the response that is critical to saving the life, preserving the life of my child would be dependent upon fire as much as it is upon a law enforcement response. There was recently a school lockdown at my kid's elementary school, Ponderosa, which is about a mile and a half, I think, from the proposed location of this high school, and they were there in a hurry. And I work in downtown Boise, my car has lights and sirens, it's not as fast as his, but I would have probably been satisfied with my response time from downtown to my kid's school, you know, under that sort of circumstance. I'm being a little facetious. Law enforcement has said that there's not an issue with their response times to that location. Fire can be addressed, but in my opinion, the bigger issue is a law enforcement response. Somebody brought up the ladder truck time response. I don't know how many calls for service the fire department has had to schools in the city of Meridian or in Ada County where it justified or required a ladder truck response. I may be completely wrong on that, but I certainly, you know, living where I do and being in the area where I am, I would appreciate the fire department being closer, even though we're serviced by Ada, I'm sorry, by Canyon County.
Yeah, we know your law enforcement and your issue with fire, I mean, come on.
Hey, hose draggers.
Well, yeah, but when you have an injury on the football field or on the basketball court, or, you know, and, because they respond to medical, every second does count.
Absolutely, Mayor. I understand, I don't recall if it was from the fire department that I heard this, or if it was something that I read in a response email. I would be interested to know, from the fire department, what the additional response time would be for a regular apparatus that's not a ladder truck. I suspect, I thought I heard something like 45 seconds or 65 seconds difference, perhaps the fire department can clarify that. But it's certainly time, but we do see, in this proposal, a remedy for that. And with all the growth that's coming west and the neighborhoods that I just mentioned, there's certainly going to be a necessity for more fire response capability anyway, and this is certainly a driver for that.
Yeah. Chief, do you want to address that?
Sure. So, just so you know, the ladder truck response is in the International Fire Code, and what the International Fire Code says is, if you have a building that's over 30 feet tall, you get a truck company. So, that's part of it. And anytime you have an actual structured fire, you're going to get a truck company as well. So, I was the one that brought up the truck company, I believe, in my report, it says the truck company was roughly 15 minutes away, under ideal conditions. Station two, again, with the 80% reliability, was at seven minutes to the school, which our response times are five minutes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor, if I can, real quick, the response time for the ladder truck is 10 minutes, and it would be 15 from station one.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council...
Good evening.
Councilwoman, Denise LaFever, 6706 North Salvia Way. First thing I want to look at is, you have the current zoning map right here, and up in McMillan and McDermott, there is a cluster of developments that have been identified there that are annexed and zoned that haven't been built. Those particular projects already have sewer and water included in their development agreements. I'll move on to that. And since they have been approved and the development already includes water and sewer, as a matter of fact, one of the developers even asked for an R-15 to make the project more feasible due to water and sewer costs. I think that a reimbursement would be, would make sense, and would make sense to the taxpayers, since they're already in their development agreements. In addition, we have had massive amounts of multifamily. Anybody that picks up a building permit report for Meridian can see the number of doors that have been approved. They're not all built out, and they're not all occupied, but they're coming, we've had a lot of them. Can't lose sight that the public voted to approve school bonds to build school, citizens want it. The future land use map shows in the area, a school was shown on that area. It's within the close area, and it's not parcel-specific, it was not identified and tied to a specific parcel. School needs to be built, nobody can dispute that, we need to relieve current and future growth. A required condition that makes sense is a second access prior to opening. The developer to the north is being more than accommodating and interested in helping with the road, and in addition to a fire station. And when I talked to him in the back row, he says that he's looking at single-family, not looking at multifamily, which is a good thing. In addition, I applaud them planning ahead. I mean, I cannot tell you how many times I've sat in the back, and over and over again, people coming up saying, "The schools are overcrowded, the schools are overcrowded." And here they are, coming with a proposal forward, saying that it's, they're planning ahead before it all happens, and I think it's absolutely fabulous. And I still remember the day when my niece and nephew went to the new Eagle High School, and I thought, oh my goodness, that's so remote, I can't believe there's a school way out there. So, you know, this may be remote right now, but it's coming, and the development agreements and the development applications keep coming one after another. So, I'm all for the project, and it's not, in the new comprehensive plan, there's already a school in that area, so.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jill Leen Camp, principal at Meridian High School, 1900 West Pine Avenue in Meridian. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, I usually do a much better job when I'm prepared, but I feel like there's a couple of things that you guys do need to know, since Meridian High School has been mentioned many times. The first thing is that I'm terrified that there's 9,000 homes that are scheduled to be built in my zone. I'm looking at, you know, if this high school isn't built, I could have up to 4,000 students, possibly in my school, and I feel like we're always talking about that catastrophic event, and that seems to be the main thing that's on our mind, but there are a lot of... there are a lot of safety issues, especially in, I think Mike Carano can attest, when you have an overcrowded school. If I had 4,000 students, I can imagine the safety issues that I would be looking at in my parking lot as kids are trying to get to classes, things like that. So I would, I would encourage you to think about the safety issues when we overcrowd additional high schools, and where we're going to put all those kids that are going in those 9,000 homes. I do want you to know that we, just like Mike, we think constantly about safety. I am very proud to work in the West State School District right now because we're actually working on all becoming certified in Level One safety. And that's all we've been thinking about. And I think you, you guys know, you've probably seen the press releases and that. Right now, all of our high schools, we've implemented the lockdown system. All our kids are wearing badges. And at Meridian High, it's going in full effect on Monday. So we're always concerning safety. The second thing is, I keep, I've heard a lot of people say, "Why don't we just redraw the boundaries?" And I just want you to know right now, with the new remodel, I only have four empty viable classrooms at Meridian High School. And that's because I have about 13 classrooms that are special ed classrooms. And I can only put about four or five, sometimes up to 10, students in those classrooms for the safety of students. These are, these are sometimes students that are violent. They can't be around large groups, and that's for the safety of them. So even though we were built to capacity, we were projected for 2,400, I, I will not be able to put 2,400 safely in the school because of the large amount of special ed students that I, I do serve, because they do need their own classrooms. So like I said, right now, I only have four empty classrooms where we could add more students. So I just wanted to make sure I, that you guys understood that point, too. Do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Have you already testified?
I did, so I wanted to ask. I, I didn't say.
Okay, you can't, you can't stand there and ask it. But let me first find out if there are other people who would like to testify. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dave Jorgensen. My address is 14254 West Battenburg Drive, Boise, Idaho.
Thank you.
On the border of Meridian. I have two kids who have graduated from Rocky Mountain High School. I have one who's a senior at Rocky Mountain High School. I graduated from Meridian High School before all these other high schools in Meridian were built. I have a lot of love for Meridian. I will not repeat all the comments we've made. I'll make two points real quick and stand for any questions. First of all, I support the, the application moving forward. I am very well aware, as a land developer, of the city of Meridian's desire to not move development past McDermott. I'm also well aware, it wasn't that many years ago, you didn't want to move it past Black Cat. And that has kind of happened, didn't it? So those are my comments there. Secondly, Councilman Palmer, you asked the question, of all the conditions we're talked about, which ones can you live with or not live with it, for example? The ones about off-site sidewalks, development as it comes, it will build the sidewalks. That is often, and all, I would say, always a requirement of the developments when they move forward. The kids drive, almost all these kids are going to drive or take a bus to the school. There will be so few people walking to the school in the first few years until there's development either across the street or Mr. Hunter's next door, or wherever it may be. So I think, if I were to choose, I would say do not ask for the school to build those off-site sidewalks. I'll stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
It's Dave.
Want a question?
I've got a question. You know, given the industry that you're in, do you have any, you know, further comment on, on something that really probably has nothing to do with you, but the, the situation with the road and, and your experience in similar situations with connectivity, connectivity to other parcels?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, I assume you're talking about the stub streets that have been asked for or maybe provided to, but maybe don't build it now? Uh-huh. Oh, I have lots of opinions to that. You have a late night here. You probably are not going to make a decision tonight, is my guess, but you may be comfortable enough to accept the conditions that's being proposed. I've got a hunch that you maybe want to stew over this and come back and make a final decision. My opinion is, is whenever asked, an applicant comes forward, whether it's a school or developer, if there's a stub road that's supposed to go forward, if it's a phased development, then you stub it when the phase goes in. Kind of simple. But make sure it's provided for. I think that's asking a lot of the school to build it upfront, and yet maybe they're not ever planning on, at least not for 10 years, building the residential, because there's really not a residential application coming forward. So that makes it a little bit unique. And so in that regard, make sure it's provided for so that the adjacent parcel is not landlocked. I do think that connectivity to the north and to the west will be required for that future applicant.
You know, the problem with being around here for a while is we learn lessons along the way. And sidewalks have been a real issue for our citizens. We have sidewalks that go nowhere, don't connect, and we get a lot of criticism for that. We also get a lot of criticism because we're swallowing up open space, and one of the reasons we haven't wanted to go west past at McDermott is to fill in a lot of that open space, growing from the inside out, which you get better economies of scale with your services, you start getting connectivity, and someday we may not be auto-oriented or so reliant on the car. But when we keep land use planning in this fashion, we will never change behaviors or safety issues. Safety issues of our public safety has been, not every student will be able to drive. And I've had four teenagers, none of them took the bus, because that's not cool. And that's unfortunate, because we need more students wanting to take the bus. But they also need to have safe alternatives as well, and sidewalks are those alternatives. It is a chicken and an egg thing. Sidewalks come with development, and it's an off-site requirement, so you can't force them unless you say it's a safety issue, and unless that is addressed, we can't continue to approve developments that are going to cause safety issues. So I don't know. I hear our community say all these different things, and I've heard it all tonight, too. So what do you want? I want a high school, but I disagree. There are open fields between McDermott and Linder Road, and not all of them are entitled or committed. There are, there is land available. So we want a high school. Where are we going to put it is the question, and it's fortunately not my decision to make. But, and for development, I would imagine that the development community wants a safe community, too. And your question, my question to you is, why wouldn't you want sidewalks?
Madam Mayor, I was looking for that question, so there it is. The question was posed by Councilman Palmer, if you were to select any type of conditions, which would you not require, or which would be less necessary? Why would you not want sidewalks? Of course you want sidewalks. You want sidewalks everywhere. The, ACHD's got a vehicle registration initiative to this fall to try to increase registration fees, so there's more money for, among other things, safer houses of schools, of which I support. And so to suggest I don't want sidewalks is not what I'm suggesting. But if we're to try to decide how to spend taxpayer dollars that have been already predetermined for the bond for the school, maybe that's one that doesn't necessarily need to happen right now, as it will come as the development comes forward.
My family and I rode our bikes out on Ustick. It has no shoulder, and it has fast-moving cars. It is kind of frightening what we're talking about right now.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I, I would think the road widening is actually to ensure the bikes' lane safety you're talking about is, because bikes don't usually drive on the sidewalk. I would think that's actually more important, given the distance of where these homes are today.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Again, thank you.
We will hear from this gentleman, and then we're going to take a 10-minute break.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to object. Everybody did say 13 minutes.
I, I'm sorry.
I had plenty to say, and I think you have to leave.
Well, Counsel, I, this would be a second testimony. I, I would...
I didn't stand for questions. I'm happy to.
I don't think there are any questions, but...
I'm quick.
I, I would ask, Counsel, do you want to hear a second comment?
Madam Mayor, I guess the, I thought that he was just coming up to see if he, because he did a stand for questions, I guess that my, I don't have a problem unless it creates a, not a problem for everybody else in the audience that then also wants a second testimony. So I don't, if it's just one quick...
It is quick.
At, at this point, we'll go ahead and take a break and reconvene in 10 minutes.
Okay, it appears that we won't take second testimonies, but is there anyone who hasn't testified that would like to testify?
Good evening, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Fred Deepold, 5946 Elgato Lane.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council. I just have a couple of points. One that I think hasn't been covered here tonight is the fact that the property to the north, the Heartland Townhomes Property Management or the Trilogy Development, they're, not only are they willing to do the road and pay for the road upon annexation, but your master pathway, once that's all built out, is going to be an awesome connectivity back into the Oaks development. And there's been a lot of talk about safety, and to me, that's huge. I mean, that path is what, eight feet wide paved? And not to mention all the new roads and curb gutter and sidewalks. So I think that's something that needs to be pointed out, that they're wanting to move forward with as quickly as possible. The other thing is, there's been some talk about, you know, the new need for a fire station. But if I remember correctly, when the Oaks was first approved on the corner of McDermott and McMillan, so this is on the south side, southeast corner, there was a fire station slated there 10 years ago. That was part of their conditions of approval. I don't know if the fire department can remember that, but there was a parcel already in the city's name for that, and it's since disappeared. Had something to do with when Toll took over and you guys replatted and proved all that. So there was a need already for a fire department, and it was slated for that area. And so why it went away, I'm not sure. And then the other thing, because I'm sitting here hearing about fire response, and I'm looking at all these fire sprinklers, there's 40 fire sprinklers in this room, and so I'm sure that this new modern school is going to have, I don't know, 5,000 fire sprinklers. And, you know, they're connecting water all the way from the new well, McDermott and McMillan, all the way into their project, plus Eustick and Black Cat. They're going to have the loop, there's going to be the fire flow with 5,000 sprinklers. I'm sure that, you know, helps with the, you know, if there's a fire, they're going to be swimming. There's going to be so much water. And so I'm not sure how that plays into it, but in my mind, it reduces the need for, you know, we talk about the, you know, the response time for a fire truck. If there's a fire, they're going to be swimming because of all the water in the area. And the other thing is, I do want to support, I work with Gerald Flower, and he is, I know he wrote a letter to ask for sewer to go to and through to his parcel. And so I just wanted to be a voice for him to say, you know, if you're going to extend sewer to the other neighbors, it only seems right that he would get that as well. And other developments, you know, are required for the same thing. So with that, are there any questions?
Thank you. No, I didn't remember a fire pad in the Oaks, but I did remember there was something for Western Nada Recreation District and the pool.
That was there.
But I didn't remember the fire department thing, but maybe Sonya can look that up while we're chatting, perhaps.
Madam Mayor, Council, may, would you please repeat the question? I was looking up something else.
Well, the testimony was that at the Oaks, when they had their approval at the corner of McMillan and McDermott, there was a pad for a fire department. I knew that they had the swimming pool and the park that they were working with, Western Nada Recreation District, but I didn't remember a fire department.
Yeah, that went away.
Okay.
It was originally proposed, and they did an amendment a while back, and that's all residential now.
Right.
Good memory.
My point was, there was, a need was already recognized in the area, and there was one planned for that area, and it went away for whatever reason. But all the homes are still planning to be built.
Thank you. Any further testimony? Would the applicant like to come and address any questions and to wrap this up? If you'll please restate your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Gary Allen. My address is 601 West Bannock in Boise. So what we've heard tonight is that the city has done a really good job and detailed, done a lot of great detailed planning for growth. And we've also heard that the school district has done a lot of really good detailed planning for growth as well. But those two plans have come into some conflict. And I think the question is whether the conflict is great enough that it would prevent a school from going forward in this, the location where it was planned by the district here. And I don't think that it is. And let me talk to the major issues. I do think we may need some more time, but I do think there's a place where we can come together here. And let me talk about the major aspects of that. The first one is the second street access. That, you know, we have an agreement with the developer who's going to come in and seek annexation for that and provide a fire site. That's really good news for everybody. Now, I think we like, and we think we've presented you a condition, if you were inclined to move forward tonight, that would address that and, you know, allow for the contingencies to be addressed. If you're thinking along the lines of what Councilmember Borton was suggesting, and want to map out those contingencies a little bit more, we don't have a problem with that. So we could, you know, spend a little time with staff and otherwise to try and reach a more filled-out condition regarding the second access and the fire site. Now, let me talk about safety a little bit, because that's been a big issue tonight. So obviously, there's a lot done in the school site to think about safety. So the building is designed to meet all current life safety codes. It's got fire alarm with voice evacuation and fire sprinklers throughout the building. It's a pretty safe site from a fire standpoint. Now, what we've heard tonight is there's some trade-off, right? If you don't allow a school to be built here, you're, you know, you're not alleviating the crowding we've got in other places, and those schools are over capacity. They've got their own safety issues. And so we need this school to help alleviate those. We didn't ever talk about this, but there is an emergency access that meets all the code requirements out to McDermott. So there is a second access for emergency vehicles, which is exclusive of the connector on McMillan. Let's talk about the fire station a little bit. The fire station is, you know, it's not all that you want in terms of the, in terms of the response time, but it's only 2.9 miles away on a rural road. And the testimony was that the police were not concerned about response times to this facility, and you have a resource officer on-site. So there's a lot that's going on there from a standpoint of safety. We think that's an adequate program. That is probably more than you require of most applicants who come before you. Here's what I'd suggest, though, on this and other, if you think more is required, give some direction to staff to work out a condition with us. You know, because you, in fact, have an obligation with any conditional use permit, if you don't think you can grant it based on the application in front of you, to tell the applicant what they could do to get an approval. We want to know that. And that applies to the safety issue as well as the others. Off-site sidewalks was a big topic of discussion. You know, our understanding was that the staff was okay with the busing option, and that the sidewalks naturally, in most of these circumstances, fill in as the, as development comes through and builds its own sidewalks. And we think that's an adequate solution here. And, but if you don't, then let's give some direction to staff to try and work something out. But, you know, I mean, it's setting a very different precedent than you ever have, as Mr. Jorgensen said. And I was really glad to hear his developer's perspective up here, that you're now asking applicants to put in a great deal of off-site improvements, which opens up a bunch of cans of worms, I'm sure that you're familiar with. So I want to make sure, we need to make sure that the conditions include all of the ACHD conditions. That's something I'm not sure we, at this hour, we could be comfortable with. And then finally, is the woodside access. So I'm confident with what we heard tonight from the city staff, that we could work out a deal with Mr. Hunter on sewer, so that, I think we can address that issue. I don't know that we're going to come to agreement, and we're going to need you to decide whether we have to build a road at this point. As you heard from Mr. Jorgensen, and his experience is similar to mine, if you have a future phase of the project, you don't stub the roads until that phase is built. And that's what we're proposing. Maybe we can, there's something to talk about in terms of where the right-of-way is located. There aren't a lot of choices there. But, you know, so we think a little bit of time would help us get closer. There may still be things that you need to resolve. Again, give us some guidance, and see if we can come back with something that meets the council's concerns. I mean, we do have a big concern, however, about putting public dollars into building a road that, at this point, only benefits that developer. Okay, and so I think that covers the major, the major issues. You know, we think there's, you know, again, the school district thinks this is the best location for this high school, from the standpoint of meeting its needs. We hear you as to your concerns about how it fits in with the city's orderly growth, but we also think there's a way to figure that out in a way that works. And so we'd like you to get your direction and see if we can address that. So that's all I have, and I would be happy to take any questions.
Sorry, Dean. Thank you, Gary.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So here's where I'm sitting on it. I'm in favor of it happening. Councilman Borton's points about figuring out how to make the second access, you know, more in stone, so that it'll definitely happen no matter what, one way or another, by the time the school opens. Need to figure out how to make that happen. So yeah, we're going to need more time. I want staff to be less against it, so whatever conditions or anything that you guys can come up with together to make it so that, while you still may be against it, that it's more palatable. And with regards to the woodside access, I want to hear, you know, what the rest of council thinks on this. To give you, remind you about precedent, I was against it when we did this, but with the Norco building at Eagle and Overland, Rackham Way was going to be sufficient for his initial development, but we required Norco to construct that road and stub it to the neighbor, Zanzos, even though Zanzos wasn't going to be needing that stub, just in anticipation of future development. I didn't think it needed to be done. His plan, Mr. Kissler's plan, as he explained, was to build that later so that they can share in the costs with future developers, but we required them to go ahead and build that road. So if we want to go off what we've done before, then we should make them build it. If we want to go off what is more realistic to me, as Mr. Jorgensen explained, we shouldn't make them build it, but should ensure that there's ability for them to build it, or however that process may work, usually. Once all that's figured out, and I don't know how much time you need to make all that happen, then I'm in favor of approving it.
Any other questions? Any questions for Mr. Allen? Ms. Laura Roberts.
Madam Mayor. Just wanted to make sure you said with more time you would go through the ACHD, because I reread it again this afternoon, and it feels like there's a lot of stuff in there. So just wanted to make sure that you are willing to go through and include that in the plan to complete it with more time.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Roberts, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Before we close the public hearing, maybe it would be prudent to call on Lieutenant Harper, just to confirm and maybe give some final thoughts in regard to the police department's, you know, concerns, or maybe to confirm what he had mentioned earlier on the record.
Lieutenant, yes. No, you can do it right there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Again, I've heard a lot myself tonight, and I think the important part, we talked about kind of the expansion of the city and really extending ourselves out to the west, and I guess I've learned quite a bit from this public hearing as well, which is always nice. But I guess I want to reiterate, you know, the second public access, that was agreed upon rather easily through some discussions, and then having an SRO in the school. Again, when it comes to safety and security, we have it right there in the school. Through, obviously, some contractual agreements to make that happen, we will have law enforcement presence in that school, and which will be a benefit beyond just safety and security. And response times, looking at the numbers that were provided for priority three calls, or high priority calls, there's, they almost mirror what our average is citywide, which is nice. And then there was talk about sidewalks and, and just that area in general. There's lots of areas of this city that we cover that are Swiss cheese, as, I don't know if that's some legal term, but sure, I doubt it is, but we're going to go with it throughout the city.
Once someone offers it, we will all say it.
Okay. But it's, we respond to these types of areas throughout the city, from the north, south, east and west, or at least north, south and west, not the east. So we're used to that. We understand the challenges, and we're going to provide that service regardless of where it's at in our community, because that's what the community expects from its police department. So again, I think we've beaten the horse on safety and security, and that's pretty much what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Any further questions for staff, the applicant, or any of those that provided comments this evening? Okay, if council wants to continue this, I think, as Mr. Allen had pointed out, it would be helpful to really point out the areas that you would like staff to bring further detail back. If...
Obligation with any conditional use permit, if you don't think you can grant it based on the application in front of you, to tell the applicant what they could do to get an approval. We want to know that. And that applies to the safety issue as well as the others. Off-site sidewalks was a big topic of discussion. You know, our understanding was that the staff was okay with the busing option and that the sidewalks naturally in most of these circumstances fill in as the, as development comes through and builds its own sidewalks. And we think that's an adequate solution here. And, but if you don't, then let's give some direction to staff to try and work, work something out. But, you know, I mean, it's, it's setting a very different precedent than you ever have, as, as Mr. Jorgensen said. And I was really glad to hear his developer's perspective up here, that you're now asking applicants to put in a great deal of off-site improvements, which opens up a bunch of cans of worms, I'm sure that you're, that you're familiar with. So I want to make sure, we need to make sure that the conditions include all of the ACHD conditions. That's something I'm not sure we, at this hour, we could be comfortable with. And then finally is the woodside access. So I, I'm confident with what we heard tonight from the city staff that we could work out a deal with Mr. Hunter on sewer. So that, I think we can address that issue. I don't know that we're going to come to agreement, and we're going to need you to decide whether we have to build a road at this point. As you heard from Mr. Jorgensen, and his experience is similar to mine, if you have a future phase of the product, project, you don't stub the roads until that phase is built. And, and that's what we're proposing. Maybe we can, there's something to talk about in terms of where the right-of-way is located. There aren't a lot of choices there. But, you know, so we think a little bit of time would help us get closer. There may still be things that you need to resolve. Again, give us some guidance and see if we can come back with something that meets the council's concerns. I mean, we do have a big concern, however, about putting public dollars into building a road that, at this point, only benefits that developer. Okay. And so I think that covers the major, the major issues. You know, we think there's, you know, again, the, the school district thinks this is the best location for this high school from the standpoint of meeting its needs. We hear you as to your concerns about how it fits in with the city's orderly growth. But we also think there's a way to figure that out in a way that works. And so we'd like you to get your direction and see if we can address that. So that's all I have, and I would be happy to take any questions.
Sorry, Dean. Thank you, Gary.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So here's where I'm sitting on it. I'm, I'm in favor of it happening. Councilman Borton's points about figuring out how to make the second access, you know, more in stone, so that it'll definitely happen no matter what, one way or another, by the time the school opens. Need to figure out how to make that happen. So yeah, we're going to need more time. I want staff to be less against it. So whatever conditions or anything that you guys can come up with together to, to make it so that while you still may be against it, that it's more palatable. And with regards to the woodside access, I want to hear what, you know, what the rest of council thinks on this. To give you, remind you about precedent, I was against it when we did this, but with the Norco building at Eagle and Overland, Rackham Way was going to be sufficient for his initial development, but we required Norco to construct that road and stub it to the neighbor, Zanzos, even though Zanzos wasn't going to be needing that stub, just in anticipation of, of future development. I didn't think it needed to be done. His plan, Mr. Kissler's plan, as he explained, was to build that later so that they can share in the costs with future developers, but we required them to go ahead and build that road. And so if we want to go off what we've done before, then we should make them build it. If we want to go off what is more realistic to me, as Mr. Jorgensen explained, we shouldn't make them build it, but should ensure that there's ability for them to build it or however that process may work usually. Once all that's figured out, and I don't know how much time you need to make all that happen, then I'm in favor of approving it.
Any other questions? Any questions for Mr. Allen? Ms. Laura Roberts.
Madam Mayor. Just wanted to make sure you said with more time you would go through the ACHD, because I reread it again this afternoon, and it feels like there's a lot of stuff in there. So just wanted to make sure that you are willing to go through and include that in, in the plan to complete it with more time.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Roberts, yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Palmer.
So how much time is needed to, we do?
Hi.
Nobody will say anything, so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Before we close the public hearing, maybe, maybe it would be prudent to call on Lieutenant Harper, just to confirm and maybe give some final thoughts in regard to the police department's, you know, concerns, or maybe to confirm what he had mentioned earlier on the record.
Lieutenant, yes. No, you can do it right there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Again, I, I've heard a lot myself tonight, and I think the important part, we talked about kind of the expansion of the city and, and really extending ourselves out to the west. And I guess I've learned quite a bit from this public hearing as well, which is always nice. But I guess I want to reiterate, you know, the, the second public access, that was agreed upon rather easily through some, some discussions. And then having an SRO on the school, again, when it comes to safety and security, we have it right there in the school through, obviously, some contractual agreements to, to make that happen. We will have law enforcement presence in that school and, which will be a benefit beyond just safety and security. And response times, looking at the numbers that were provided for priority three calls, our high priority calls, there's, they almost mirror what our average is citywide, which is nice. And then there was talk about sidewalks and, and just that area in general. There's lots of areas of this city that we cover that are Swiss cheese, as, as, I don't know if that's some legal term, but sure, sure, I doubt it is, but we're, we're going to go with it throughout the city.
Once someone offers it, we will all say it.
Okay. But it's, we, we respond to the, these types of areas throughout the city from the north, southeast, and west, or at least north, south, and west, not the east. So we're used to that. We understand the challenges, and we're going to provide that service regardless of where it's at in our community, because that's what the community expects from its police department. So again, I think we've, we've beaten, beaten the horse on, on safety and security and, and that's pretty much what I have. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff, the applicant, or any of those that provided comments this Okay. If council wants to continue this, I, I think it, as Mr. Allen had pointed out, it would be helpful to really point out the, the areas that you would like staff to bring further detail back. If you want new staff comments, as Sonya mentioned, there, there is a draft that can be considered, but I think your discussion and any comments and concerns would be really helpful for staff, the applicant, and all of those still in attendance and, and perhaps even watching online.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Am I allowed to change my mind on something?
Yes.
So as I was pondering more on the Norco situation, that was different in that, that, you know, future parcels that, that Norco is required to build that road to attach to wouldn't have been blocked off. In fact, those parcels would have been the ones that would be able to build the road right off their own property to connect to Overland. So it was a different situation that doesn't really, doesn't match as well as I initially thought on this. So now I'm leaning towards thinking this, the district should either, I don't, I don't know how to do it, whether they should build it off the bat or agree to build it at the time that it ends up being needed to connect to whatever would be developed on the woodside parcel. I guess all that to say, I'm less decided about my opinion on that.
Maybe some options.
Sure.
To trigger some thoughts.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I, you know, there's just, there's a lot of moving parts here. You know, I, I think it's awesome that what West Ada has done to, with the second access and some talking points that have been concerned, that were concerns in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, whether, you know, we need, anywhere from, you know, the second access to infrastructure, so on, et cetera. But I think going forward, I think that there's some things that we need to hammer out. And I think that by closing the public hearing and voting on it this evening would probably a little bit, would be too premature. Some, some guidance that I would probably give would be to really hone in the contingencies for the north property. You know, I, as, as a municipality, I don't, I wouldn't, I would not like having, I wanted to be exact and crystal clear. And whatever you guys bring back, if, if that's indeed where we go, would be something that I stand for. I think that we need to have discussions about the woodside property. I can understand Jim's concern about being landlocked. I think that's, I think that in, in hypothetical conditions of approval, whatever, I think that we, we need to talk more in regard to that as well. I think, I, just reading through my notes real quick, the police department mentioned, confirmed some things for me, and those are my two biggest things. So I'm sure that others up here would, would give more guidance, but those are the, just two things that I thought of real quickly.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Well, everything has been hammered out so many times tonight. But at this point, I am, I am in favor of this project. I, it, I mean, there are, there is a little bit of heartburn with some of the issues. But they did most of what the planning and zoning asked them to do. And as long as we're adding in all of the, you know, except ACD, ACHD conditions and improvements, building the road to McMillan, I, I think that maybe even just an agreement on that northern road, which they have some sort of an agreement, but if the, that property does not get annexed, you know, some, at least let us know what the plan B is, they're going to build it and they're going to pay for it. I'm assuming that, like you said, they'll know that for the school is built, is this not going to come up with it, the school's going to be fully built, and then they find out they can't build the road, they will find out early in the planning stages if the application is coming forward soon. And making sure the woodside property isn't landlocked. I think those, to me, those are like, those are the most important things at this point. Knowing that, you know, the police time is really good. Fire, it could be, maybe, depends on if fire station number two, if there's anybody there or not, or if they're at a different fire. We've been working on fire station six for like five years or so, and it's not built yet. So having a piece of property that is designated for a fire station does not mean that there's going to be a fire station there in a year, or two years, or even five years. And I think that just needs to be really clear. Obviously, when, when it's, when the time is right, when it's available, when the funding is available to build the, the station and the need is, is great enough, it'll be built. But it's a very long process, and I just want to make sure that everybody really understands that. But I think we should, you know, continue this for as soon as we possibly can, giving staff and applicant long enough to get this, get the ducks in a row.
Mr. Borton.
We're looking at each other here. I have appreciated the discussion and the, and the input and, and depth of work that's been done on this. One of the questions, kind of working backwards, that was asked, I think, Gary, you mentioned it kind of in your closing, that really is the crux of this, is the, is the conflict so great that there is no conceivable path forward? I don't believe that it is. I think, you know, the devil is, is in the details that we're discussing now and, and so I'll give some comments, I think, to the applicant and the staff that hopefully aid some of the, the discussion. The, the one thing that, that I disagree with is the concern about whether this is patchwork or Swiss cheese development. And it is, kind of is. And one of the things I think we have to own is, this very well might be a byproduct of the types of land use decisions we make when we grow rapidly to the west, and, and it's difficult to, to plan in the perfect world where, whether it's a school or we wrestle with public safety concerns as well, trying to grow perfectly from the inside out. And our district doesn't necessarily have the benefit. And when you look at the map, the, the benefit to, to acquire property that fits its purpose in the perfect order. So is this, is this somewhat patchwork? It is, but I don't know if there's another way that allows the district to meet, meet its needs. So I don't think that factor is fatal to the application itself. Conditions of approval is where all the, the river meets the road, and, and I have great concern, I don't think the draft really are conditions of approval as we understand them. When we see conditions of approval, they are fully vetted with all of our various departments providing detailed analysis that would explain exactly how a project like this might be approved. We're not even close to there yet. So I appreciate you, you mentioning, we use that term somewhat loosely with kind of the first sketch of it, but if it's going forward, and to Councilman Palmer's point, you referenced all of the other conditions, there's a, there's probably a lot of them that we need to add to flesh out a lot of these, you know, these concerns. In that process, I appreciate the, the district's effort in creating a solution to the north. And, and hopefully, it sounds like they're open to the idea of what I think is a critical requirement, and it sounds like council might agree, that construction of the, of the road to McMillan is completed before certificate of occupancy. I don't think the condition is written, has all the details that are necessary, because that added element would be, no matter what, and if it's at district expense to be reimbursed later somehow, so be it, but CO cannot be held up for lack of constructing a road. There's a lot of work that probably has to go to craft that type of condition, but that seems to be critical, because without it, we're in a world of hurt. I think, all the comments with regards to the east-west connections, Heath comment, Heath's comments, I think, are well taken. That's a difficult situation, but, but it seems appropriate to require that to be part of this application. It very well might benefit the value of the parcels to the south of the school district's property and their future development. That cost might be recouped, however, those might be developed when those are sold off. So that should be included somehow. I, we, at times, have applicants who can have the ability to acquire and utilize sidewalk improvements offsite and have cooperation with area developers. These offsite sidewalks, in particular, I think it's a mile on McDermott.
That's huge.
Among others, seem to be excessive in light of what is offered and the condition to be fleshed out, the safe route to, or the, excuse me, the busing, safe busing to school. I know there was reference of some agreement to do so within the mile and a half radius where it normally isn't allowed, but to flesh out that commitment, that that will sort of be the alternate solution to requiring the offsite sidewalks. Let me go through, see if there's any other. Ink, those were the main ones. Probably, I'm supportive of what the district's trying to do and the, and kind of the box they've been put in, and, and believe the glass is half full and we can craft conditions that meet all of these needs. It takes a little additional cooperation between the parties. I think they can get there. But those are, I guess, my, my remarks, hopefully, to continue to move the ball towards what could be an approval. And, and Madam Mayor, it's not, this is a lawyer answer. It's not an exhaustive list, just because the, the redlined conditions of approval, these are a week old, I think, as far as what we've seen. So there's probably, you know, mays and shells that could, lawyer language, it'd have to be fleshed out as well. There could be more things. So if this comes back in, on the 16th, perhaps, or the 23rd, maybe some additional ones. But those are the ones that jumped out to me.
And I, I certainly think that if the council's direction is for staff to bring back recommendations or, or that we build our findings on, considering instead of denial, approval, what would those look like? It might bring some of those additional things to, to light. I, I'm curious on the parcel that gives the annexation path, is that the Sprigel or something like that? We usually don't annex without a plan. There's another thing that we're, we're compromising on. What are some options from legal or planning perspective on a lot of what we ask, we get through annexation, and then we lose that right? Are there any, anything that we can build in to, to that regard? I would ask the school district, I've heard on several occasions from Ada County Highway District that, or Compass, that we don't have a safe routes to school plan from the school district. They have a major out in front of our voters on the registration fee that is also intended for safe routes to school. Is, I would like the school district to take a look at this area and see if there is a plan that we can put in place to put in front of Ada County Highway District that would bring connectivity, some kind of a safe pathway, if it's through the Oaks or down a, down McMillan or something, because those roads are two-lane rural roads that have no shoulders and don't have connected sidewalks. And not every child is going to take a bus or have a car or be driven. Safety is paramount. It is our number one responsibility. And if there is some plan you can put into place so that you can propose it to Ada County Highway District, to get it on their radar early and fast, that would be certainly a, a preference.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Whatever your name is. Palmer.
Sorry. I'll give whatever.
It's late.
And in, you know, awkward situations like this, where there is going to be a time period where there won't necessarily be, you know, access from every possible mode of travel to get there in a hundred percent perfectly safe way, I think, rather than it being government's responsibility to ensure that every child makes it there safely, that we encourage the parents to take responsibility for their, their own children. And if, if there's not going to be a normal way for them to get here, that they figure out how to make it happen until development provides those, you know, hard surface walkways off of the roadway.
But also that, I know that the woodside cross-access and, and sewer were mentioned. I, I think there was a note of the Flower property that's south of it, just I, from our staff perspective, what are, what are the options and, and how does that look and, and those kind of things, too? I, I don't know if you answered, Warren, the, the Flower property. I know you mentioned that Woodside would have access.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so we did do the analysis to determine that Woodside can probably serve their entire parcel with a, a connection to the school district's sewer line. We did not look at the Flower parcel to determine whether or not there is enough depth there or the sewer could extend that far. We would have to do that analysis in order to determine whether or not that was feasible. I don't know if it is at this point. Both of those parcels, the Woodside parcel, the Flower parcel, as well as the residential parcel that the school district is ultimately planning to build, were master planned to take access via the trunk line off of McDermott Road using an eight-inch line that runs down Eustick and could stub into all of those parcels. So that was the master plan for service to all those parcels. That can still happen in the future. When that line's built, that, that, that mechanism for, for providing service can still happen. So whether or not it comes through this school district piece or not does not preclude them from obtaining service. It may have an impact on the cost and the timing of that, but it does not prohibit them from obtaining service the way the master plan intended in the first place. That's why we're not requiring the school district to extend those services to those parcels, because that's not what was planned. But if they want to work with the school district, we can, we can accommodate that. But we're not going to require it to be extended because.
No, I, I didn't mean it to be a requirement at all. But it was brought up, and we, we hadn't heard anything regarding that. So just to, to have that in the comments.
Okay.
And anything further from council?
Well, Madam Mayor.
I think you have a good list. Yes.
Well, and I, and I think that, maybe we should hear from the applicant, because we should have a plan for Sprigel, and we don't generally just blanket annex property in just so it can be a bridge to another piece of property. So maybe that's something they can, I don't know, throw together, or at least give it, you know, put something together before we approve this.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
There may, well, the applicant's coming forward. There may, well, the applicant's coming forward. Maybe not.
We can address that question, if you'd like.
Come on forward.
Matthew Adams, 462 East Shore Drive, Eagle, Idaho.
Thank you.
We have a development plan, a concept land use plan, for the Sprigle parcel. We, in early meetings with staff, understood that staff did not want us to submit that. So at that time, we did not. We have developed that plan, because that's the only way you can determine the correct route for the sewer and the water, through that parcel. So we have it available, and we're more than happy to share it with staff.
Madam Mayor, council, one of the draft provisions requires that an application for a modification to the development agreement be submitted prior to any development occurring on the Sprigle parcel, which would require a concept development plan at that time. So that's kind of the catch on that one, if that works for council. Otherwise, no staff would like to see a concept plan. That was fine.
We'll send it over, and you can determine what you do with that. That'd be great.
Okay. Thank you.
Or if it affects that condition in any way. Thank you.
Also, Madam Mayor, if I may, there was some discussion a couple of times, I heard, about ACHD conditions of approval. There are actually ACHD conditions included in the staff report in Exhibit B, so those are there for your review.
Our entertainment, huh?
Yes.
Yes. Any other points that you want staff to comment on in particular? Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
Can I make a couple of, just quick comments about the process? One, I don't know who, somebody in the public said, "It seems like it's not all figured out yet. It's because we do things in this forum." Right? Many of you know that, some don't. It's public, so you get to see sausage get made a little bit. Larger projects are more cumbersome. But this is the way it works. The second, probably all of us would share, big hats off to our planning and zoning commission. And those commissioners who took a lot of the first process and found challenges and allowed the applicant to come up with some solutions, before it even got to us. They don't get enough appreciation for what they do, so I think the Planning and Zoning Commission in Meridian did a great job.
I think you could probably add planning staff, and all of those that take a critical look at all of our applications. They don't really get enough recognition either, so, our thanks to you.
True, true. Absolutely.
Anything further?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, well, we will need a date to consider continuing this, too.
Madam Mayor?
16th?
Mr. Borton?
I would move that we continue H. 2018-0075 to October 23rd.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion as second to continue this item to October 23rd. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. And thank you all for sticking with us. So, 5 to 11. Okay, Item 9F is a public hearing with the intent to convey real property. We do still have items on our agenda, if we can ask you to have your conversations Okay, we'll open this public hearing, and Mr. Neri, are you introducing this?
Madam Mayor, I sure can. So, on your agenda now is the public hearing to convey real property, and then there's an ordinance that's attached to that. For the record, this is about the Old City Hall property at 33 East Idaho. This is in relation to the RFP that was done in conjunction with MDC a few months ago that was accepted by the city council and the MDC board. This is the public process to determine whether or not the property can be conveyed. The ordinance is, can be approved tonight. It doesn't have to be approved tonight. If it isn't going to be approved tonight, then we would need direction on what other information, if any, that we should gather. You have in your packets the original proposal for the RFP for the property to be done. There is a draft, or, excuse me, there's the draft MOU with MDC, so there's be some work. So even if the decision was to simply agree to convey the property pursuant to conditions, that would be, again, part of the conditions we'd be working out with ACHD as part of this process. Additionally, there is in your packets two other items. There is a draft MOU, and Mr. Lakey can explain that from MDC's side, and that is the working agreement between MDC and the successful RFP proposers for the development of the Old City Hall site. And then, third, there is an appraisal that was done at the city's request of that site, and takes into account as much as could be done in a fairly short time period, trying to look at comparables and giving you some valuation of that appraiser estimate of value of the property minus the cost of demolition. I think that's the basics to get started, and I think there probably is more information that may be needed from MDC, or the proposer, or Mr. Ariel, who's been kind of managing the project from the city's side. But that's the framework to get started.
Thank you. Ms. Little Roberts?
Madam Mayor, now, did I miss it, or have we included anything? I know several of us had concerns about New Venture Lab and letting them stay in there as long as possible, but I know that we've got the 30-day clause, but we also didn't want to see where we've seen before, where someone's exited and then the building isn't ready to be torn down, or whatever. I know that I've had some feedback from area businesses that were concerned about that.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have had, Councilwoman Little Roberts, we have had some preliminary discussion with Mr. Ritter. Again, I think that's part of the detail of when that would need to be vacated. We talked about a winter, late winter type of period where the vacation would have to occur. Again, part of it is based on when the demolition would occur, which is planned to be somewhat in the spring, but those details would need to be worked out. We have talked to Mr. Ritter, he is aware that at some point of vacation, he obviously wanted as much lead time as possible, which we were in favor of as well, from the city's side. And then, I think that's a detail that would be part of the MDC transfer agreement.
Thank you.
Cameron, do you have anything you want to put out there right now?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just quickly, we do have, you know, the draft agreement that Todd and Bill put together. We also have, you know, the ordinance before you. We have the appraisal, so if you have any questions about that, if there's anything that the council would like to see in that, discussed in that, now's the time to kind of bring that to us, so that we can try to work that out, or weave that into the agreement. Again, just kind of given the timing of the project, we want to be moving forward if that is the decision of the council.
Madam Mayor?
Here to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Mylum.
Cameron, I have a picture, I have a question about page 89 of the appraisal.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just kidding.
No problem.
I think it's late.
It was just so long, it was like, huh?
It's late.
It's late.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Neri?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I could add one more thing. So, there had been earlier discussion by the council, and I think Mr. Lakey can address it from MDC's side as well, of timing and execution of this agreement, and the agreement, the project actually going, moving forward. And there are some conditions in the MOU with MDC and November Whiskey on those types of conditions, and assurances that the buildings will get torn down timely, the building permits will get issued timely, and things like that. One of the things that isn't in the draft MOU for the city's purchase and sale with MDC, because MDC has a reverter clause in that agreement with November Whiskey, we could, and again, I haven't discussed with Mr. Lakey, but have a similar clause for the city. So if the need is, is that the project doesn't happen for whatever reason, and the property then is returned to MDC, that the city would then have the right to repurchase it back from MDC for what MDC had previously paid the city for. So, we can add that condition, because that was a question that had come up in the prior discussions, as well as since we'd issued this draft. So, I just wanted to put that out there, and Mr. Lakey obviously can comment on it. We haven't had an opportunity to discuss it since we've had these drafts exchanged, so.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
I'm a simple guy, and that may be the most agreeable thing I've said tonight. Between MOU, MDC, oh, man, there was a million acronyms. So, and you may have just said the answer to what I'm about to ask, but, just so that I make sure that I understand. So approving this tonight doesn't prohibit council deciding on, you know, points where we want to say, okay, this has to be done by this date, this has to be done by this date, this has to be done by this date, and if any one of those benchmarks, or whatever, aren't met, then the city can say, we're taking it back. So we can still set those later by approving this tonight, right?
Madam Members of council, yes. So, all the, only question tonight that the council is being asked, and it doesn't have to be decided tonight, is are we willing to transfer the property from the city to MDC for a price? And right now, the price that has been proposed in the RFP was $565,000. There is an appraisal for a different price, and that's part of your conversation. But all this being, all that the request is, is the city willing to transfer it for a value? And what that value is.
Madam Mayor? So the number is determined in this tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to move forward with it, approve it, but I would like all six of us to agree on the price, so that, you know, I don't know if it causes any delay or anything to do this a week from now, to maybe have a chance to have a discussion with all six of us as to whether we're good with, you know, what was proposed, the amount, or if, because now that we have an appraisal, which, you know, we wanted it for a reason, if we want to discuss a different amount.
And to answer your question, you do not have to make a decision tonight. What that impact may be, Mr. Lakey could probably answer, but I don't believe it's time-critical to do it today.
Okay. Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burnt?
My thought process on the appraisal, I believe if, you know, is it undervalued a little bit? You know, what was proposed by November Whiskey, probably. But, you know, I'm not convinced that if it were to be sold at auction, that it would be sold for much more than what November Whiskey's proposed price is, to be honest with you. That's, it's an interesting building. It's not a new building, it's an older building, sort of in a, I'm not going to say weird spot, but like in a spot where not a lot can be done with it, other than maybe office space. And so, I don't know if there's a big price tag put on that type of a use. And so, I would be in favor of approving what November Whiskey and Pacific Companies have offered to buy it for, and to proceed this evening.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
Councilwoman Burnt, the appraisal was done as if the property was bare land. There's no building on it. So, that is the number that is in the appraisal, as if that building, after the building is gone. So it has nothing to do with old building, or it's over an acre in downtown Meridian. I mean, I don't know what it's sold for either. It seemed a little, I thought it was a little higher than I expected it to be, but it isn't including the building. So, I'm, if, I was kind of stuck, because I like, I think maybe the proposal was a little low, appraisal's a little high, and there's a reason we got the appraisal. If we were just going to ignore the appraisal, then why would we pay money to get one in the first place? So, I think ignoring it completely isn't the responsible thing to do either.
Although I think the appraisal did not consider the cost of demolition, and I think that was noted in there, that you, that was the price minus demolition. That's how I read it, anyway. Maybe someone could clarify that for us. Mr. Lakey, do you have some comments?
Madam Mayor and council members, for the record, Todd Lakey, legal counsel for MDC, address 141 East Carlton Avenue, Meridian, Idaho. So, I'll, I guess, make some initial comments, and obviously you may have some questions on how we would approach things, or how we may approach things together. I guess, I mean, you're all aware that we got two proposals, and the first proposal was an offer to have the city pay somebody to take it, in the tune of about 1.6. The proposal that we selected has the city being paid $565,000 for the property. And, you know, you have different opinions on value. The Pacific Companies, we know their expertise, they use that expertise and experience in coming up with their value. Maybe it was a little low, but maybe it wasn't. I think the, and the appraisal came in at 8:42. For me, I didn't, I didn't see the need to go into looking at the pluses and minuses, and the goods and the bads about the appraisal. I think the appraisal came in a little, came in higher, but it was also in the range. We're not talking about them undervaluing it by double, or triple, or something like that. So, I think, and our request as MDC is to stay with the amount that was suggested in the proposal that was approved and selected by both entities. And I guess the points I want to make on that are the fact that we both accepted that, kind of knowing the number. But really, I think we all feel that the project itself is a game changer, and it's probably not understandable to say that it's a huge game changer for downtown. And it will be not just the property itself, but it'll be a catalyst for the rest of the downtown, when it comes to commercial and residential development. And I think that's what I look at. The proposal estimated that the annual tax revenue generated from the site would be about $130,000. But that doesn't include, as I visited with them, didn't include the land value, it doesn't include Option C, which are those properties between the Heritage Building and the MDC Unbound Properties, that they're still trying to get, and hopefully they get. That's also a static figure. It doesn't account for the economic growth that's going to occur as a result of this. So, I think the thing to focus on from my perspective is, sure, you got an appraisal, and it shows that they're in the ballpark, but what to really look at is the return on investment that you're going to get. That $277,000 difference is going to be recuperated quickly, rapidly, and exponentially exceeded as a result of this. So, I don't want to, I guess, my hope is that we don't trip over nickels and step over dollars, or lose dollars. Our request tonight is that this council approve a number. You know, as Bill said, you can do what you want to do, but our request is to approve a number tonight, knowing that there are some other details to potentially work out, but give our board, who doesn't meet as frequently as you do, an approval at least of the number as we move forward. So we can have that in our planning purposes, for our planning purposes. The closing, council member Little Roberts, we're fairly flexible on that. We recognize, and I think November Whiskey recognizes, and Pacific Companies recognize, that it's better to have somebody in a building and not have an empty building for a long period of time. The, I think it's optimal to get folks out of it and get it knocked down sooner than later, just for the risk and the cost and things that are going on. later, just for the risk and the cost and things that are going on. But granted, the proposal says February, March. So that's, that's an appropriate timeframe, if that's what the council wants to do. That also would let you potentially hold on to the property a little bit longer before it's actually transferred, to provide that additional security if you need that. Councilmember Palmer, you mentioned the kind of steps and the rights of reversion on the potential transfer. And when MDC looked at the 703 property, what the funding, the way it was then, we couldn't put in a right of reversion, just the bank wouldn't, wouldn't go for it the way it was funded. As I visited with Mr. Roop, they're willing to have a right of reversion up to a point. The point that we can have rights of reversion are that closing of the financing, which means the bank says, you're good to go, here's your money, and they're digging. After, after that point, they won't be able to get financing, because the bank doesn't want to be in a position to lose their collateral for these $11 million that they gave them. But up to that point, as far as obtaining your approvals, obtaining your permits, your entitlements, whatever other processes are there, and a demonstration that you do have financing in place, all those things can be, can be up to that point of right of reversion. You can say, we want all these things, or we have the ability to take the property back. But once the bank gives them the $11 million and they start, then they need to be able to have that, and we have other consequences built in to the agreement, such as liquidated damages, or those kind of things where there are consequences for missing deadlines. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions if you have them.
Forgot to note that the value that this project will have after completed will more than make up any difference, right?
Madam Mayor, that's what I was trying to articulate. I must not have done it well. The return on investment on this property is exponential compared to the 277,000. It's not comparable.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Joel, we all agree that there's, you know, value, but the $130,000 tax revenue is not going to be an increase in $130,000 annual tax revenue. It's just going to mean that everybody else pays a few cents less.
Madam Mayor.
Unless I have been misunderstanding how our property taxes work for three years.
Yeah.
I apologize, I want to interrupt Councilwoman Palmer. I was just going to add a little bit more for the record, partly on maybe some of the comments, and then also for the public who might watch this at some point in time, or I saw, or are suppressed in the audience as well. The purpose of the appraisal was to give some relative value to the property, and it isn't unimportant, so I agree with Councilmember Mylum, it isn't unimportant, but it is a number. And the reality is, we all know in land business, an appraisal value is simply a number. Your property's worth was someone who will actually pay you for it. So it's important to at least consider it, but it's also, you have to look at the bigger picture of the process. And the reality is, what's more common than not in the urban renewal business, and Mr. Lakey has a great deal more experience in that than I do, is oftentimes, government is asked to provide the property at no cost to the developer. Or the development agency has purchased the property and has also requested to provide it at no cost to the development, for the exact reasons Mr. Lakey stated, the return on investment, stimulating, stimulating urban development, and other reasons. And that's the purpose of why the statute exists, is to allow for that. This one is a little more unusual in our area, because the proposer was proposing to purchase it, because they recognized the city did consider that purchase of the property was important. So the valuation of it is important. It isn't, it isn't that it's necessarily undervalued by the proposer, or overvalued by the appraiser. It's simply numbers trying to make the deal be reasonable, to be effective, to be reasonable to the public, and that the city's portion of participation in that is fair and reasonable. That's really all that's, from the legal standpoint, that's what you have to decide. Is it legal and fair, excuse me, is it fair to the public for the valuation of that property and the participation in the project for what's being proposed? So I know that's a lot of stuff that's probably more for the three people at home that are watching this than all of you, but I wanted to at least put that on the record. That's the purpose of the, of the evaluation and the appraisal, and what's being proposed. So I thought that would help your discussion.
Madam Mayor, and, and, sorry, I don't object to the amount, really by any means. To my first point, I just want all six of us here, because especially where we're contemplating selling a piece of property for, you know, $300,000 less than it appraised for, I would hate for Councilman Cavanagh to have somebody in the public come and say, why on earth would you sell, you know, a piece of publicly owned property for $300,000 less than it appraised for? I want him to be able to have on the record a yes or no, whether he agreed to it or not. So I just want the six of us. That's why I was like, if it doesn't cause any major problems by just pushing it one week, to have all six of us say, have a say in it.
Madam Mayor. I'm going to be gone next week. I'm going to be in Portugal.
Well, you can put your opinion on the record today.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Every week or so, every couple of weeks, one of us is gone, and we make important critical decisions to the city regardless of the absence, as long as we have a quorum. So I don't think it would be worth waiting. Mr. Cavanagh saw the agenda. If he thought it was a big deal to him, then he, maybe he would have said something about extending it or continuing it on. You know, I, I didn't have a problem with the number until I saw the appraisal, and now it's just annoying. I, part of me is like, why would we waste our resources and our time getting an appraisal if we were okay with the number to begin with? There's another number on the appraisal on page 39, that's the estimated assessed value. And I'm not saying we have to change it to that, 80% of the appraised value, but I still don't understand why this needs to be part of this at all, if we're just ignoring it. Mr. Neri, I heard your comments, we had a number, and if we're sticking to that number, this still seems irrelevant.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Couple thoughts. First off, in regard to Mr. Cavanagh, you know, I guarantee you, he feels, I know, without even talking to him, I know that he knows, he thinks this is a big deal. And I, I know what he's doing this evening, and I'm a big, I'm a big fan that, you know, family always comes first, so that, I, I know that he got whiff of the agenda before tonight, but I just wanted to, we all, we all have priorities, and, you know, he's just been a good dad tonight. So secondly, we're talking about like a 20-plus million dollar project. You know, I mean, and I, Todd, you said something that I completely agree with, you know, I don't, I'm not in a position where I think it's prudent to trip over the dimes to get to the dollars. I just think that's just bad business. You know, I, is it a terrible price point that November Whiskey and Pacific Companies are offering for this property? No, I believe it is fair. I think it's in the realm of fairness. You know, I think that, I, could we get a couple more dollars for it? I'm sure Josh would say yes, but like, we're talking, who cares, amount of money? I mean, it, it's, it, we're, another point was made that, you know, the amount of revenue that we're going to get back in taxes, it far outweighs the amount of money that we're, that we're going to debate this evening, so just another thought.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Quickly. I really don't think that I said Mr. Cavanagh didn't care. I said if it was a big enough deal to him.
I know what you meant.
That, well, okay.
I just wanted to tell Mr. Cavanagh.
You just kind of made it sound like I said he didn't care.
No, no, no. I apologize if I, if I came out there. I just wanted to show a little, you know, a little love to Mr. Cavanagh. That's it.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I know you didn't mean any ill will toward him. I apologize if you.
Mr. Palmer.
So again, it's not how property taxes work. And in fact, I think because it's within the urban renewal district, as the property value increases, and they are going to be paying more taxes, I believe our revenues to the general fund may actually decrease until the sunset of the district. But regardless, our revenue is not going to increase from property taxes. But I move we close the public hearing on item.
I haven't even asked if there's anyone who would like to comment, so.
I was going to even move to approve it, just to be done.
Madam Mayor, also, just real quick, I do have some information for you, in regards to the appraisal, if you'd like it. So it was done as though vacant?
Yes.
So just a couple thoughts. That's actually both November Whiskey's and Pacific Companies' proposal, as well as how this was done. And they are actually both accounting for the same demolition cost, which is 150,000 in both. So the appraisal is based on a $992,000 appraised value minus the 150, which gives you the 842,000 valuation, which is roughly $16.98 per square foot. The November Whiskey, Pacific Companies' proposed valuation is a $715,000 valuation minus the 150, which gives you the 565,000, which is a $15.34 per square foot value. So you're, you're looking at about a $1.64 per square foot difference in, in value.
$1.64 per square foot difference.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I think you nailed it when you said, let's not trip over pennies to get to dollars, because I think we're very, very fortunate to have had, to have this project going. It's going to be a boon to downtown, and about, I think it was about two and a half years ago, I asked a very prominent developer in the valley why they, he had built in Boise and built in Nampa, and when is he going to build in Meridian? And he said, give me some land, and I'll build you something. So I think we're very fortunate that we're getting some money for this. It may not be what the appraised value is, but the fact that we're getting something for the land, I think is great, and we should use this number and go for it.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Lakey? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Councilmember Palmer, we can talk taxes after we.
I would like to know that. Am I wrong? Was that wrong?
What?
My analysis on the taxes.
It doesn't matter. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
At this point, we still have a public hearing going on, and I would really love to hear from Denise.
Denise LaFever, 6706 Norserbia Way.
Thank you.
And I guess, you know, we're just talking about tripping over dimes. I don't view a quarter million dollars as tripping over dimes, and I think appraisal needs to mean something. I'm not overly excited to see that we're going to develop apartments. I mean, the comprehensive plan committee has said they want to go back and open up this area, the downtown area, and take another look at that plan. That's something that the citizens have also made comments, that they also want to take a look at redeveloping this. I'd be far more excited to see a 10, 16-story office building going downtown with economic values. So I guess, in short, I'm not overly excited about it, and especially means we're a quarter million dollar difference. So there's your first record of a taxpayer that's not real excited.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Just a comment real quick, Denise, there's a, there's a portion of that property that's in between the two properties that November Whiskey owns currently, and the Heritage Hop House, that will, if purchased, will be converted into something that you're talking about, so they're definitely, that is, that is in the mix as we speak.
Yeah, I would love to see economic, you know, business here, instead of having people driving off to Boise, I would like to see, you know, plotage, redevelopment, high rises, the whole nine yards. We haven't even had an opportunity to discuss how we want to redevelop that area based on the new comprehensive plan. So I'm just putting that out there.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to make comment? Yes. I know, I don't recognize you without the green helmet.
I know. Josh Everts, 303 East State Avenue, Old Town Meridian. I really would like to offer a comment on the line, so if you guys ever decide to put together a committee to talk about scooters, I thought wearing the helmet might get me an invite to talk, but that's neither here nor there. I do appreciate all the comments. Caleb and I were very, very deliberate when we went through all the math to make the offer of the 565. We knew that was a very, very big issue. We took that very, very serious. We did a lot of work. One of the reasons we provided 100% of our financials to show what our actual bottom line, small return was on this investment, was to convey that, that we had done our due diligence to make sure that you guys understood the reason that we weren't asking for contribution on the $20 million is because we knew that this was a big deal, and we wanted to show our stake and our investment in making this happen. With all due respect to other people that are talking about wanting to do development, there have been multiple opportunities. Three RFPs have been run since 2012, and nobody is bringing concepts. And so, so with all peace and love, like, I think we're this close. And I think that it was actually very, we worked very closely, actually, with the appraiser. They had lots of questions for Caleb and I in terms of how we got to numbers, and lots of discussion went back and forth. The number came in within a range that we thought was kind of reasonable, and as we talked about with MDC, we just made it very clear to them that we feel very comfortable with the 565 number. We feel like that based on the additional contributions that we're making, that we're not asking you guys to participate in for the amount of return that we're expecting on this, we felt it was a win-win for everybody. So those are just kind of my comments, and I'm open for any questions. And Caleb would love to be here, he's in Oregon with family, so.
Thank you, Josh. Council, any questions? Thank you.
I appreciate it, thanks.
All right, present motion.
Any other comments? Mr. Palmer.
I move we close the public hearing on item 9F.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Ordinance 18-1792 is item 9G. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 18-1792, an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain city-owned real property. Meridian Development Corporation located at 33 East Idaho Avenue, commonly referred to as Old City Hall, and legally described as lots 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 28, 29, 30, 31, and 32 of Block 2 Meridian Town Site in the city of Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest on behalf of the city of Meridian the deed and other documents necessary to complete the transaction, providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you. You've heard this ordinance read by title. Counsel, do you have any questions, or do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we approve ordinance 18-1792 for the amount of 565,000 even. With suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
I was just going to ask if you put on the record, again, we discussed the reversion clause that's in the agreement that we will work out with MDC. I just wanted to be clear, is that a desire of the council, that we have that conversation, that there be a reversion to the city repurchasing the property if it were not to develop?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we'll, we'll work that out with the next agreement. This only needs this part to be done.
Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 9H is under Police Department. Good evening.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm here to hopefully quickly go over a project that the K-9 unit had been working on since 2017, a fundraiser that the village started back in 2017. The village purchased over 1,000 stuffed. The village purchased over 1,000 stuffed logoed dogs that look like our canines, and ultimately, which everybody's familiar with, right, the program, or the fundraiser? Through that, the whole, the whole point of this was to raise money for bulletproof vests for our canines, additional tactical training, so on and so forth. From 2017 to 2018, all the dogs were sold to the tune of raising over $14,000 by the sale of those dogs, which went towards the K-9 fund. In May of 2018, the fundraiser was selected for the International Council of Shopping Centers and received an extra $10,000, which is pretty cool. So, to date, we have raised $24,000, and tonight, we are seeking authority to spend $10,000 of that in FY '19. And I want to go to Portugal.
Thank you, and congratulations on that. The village has been an excellent partner.
Yes.
Counsel, any questions?
Hmm.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Hearing none. Madam Mayor, I move we approve the budget amendment for the K-9 training not to exceed $10,000.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve 9H. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. We already heard 10A, item 11, any item under this number? Okay, I just have a couple of reminders that Unai Way Campaign Lunch is tomorrow from 11:30 to 1:30. Faith Leaders Luncheon is Thursday at 11:30. And the Chamber versus the City softball game is October 9th at 5:30 at Settlers Park. Be there, be square.
Madam Mayor, before you adjourn, I was going to mention one more thing to you and the council. Mr. Watts spoke to me before the meeting, he left a draft of policy updates for the Purchasing Division that he wants to discuss next week, so I just wanted, had a lot of papers tonight, I wanted to make sure you saw that, because he was going to have that on next week's agenda for discussion.
Okay, very good. Okay, with that, I would entertain.
Madam Mayor.
Sorry.
Sorry, sorry. Real quick, I just passed out, kind of feedback, and the reassignment of liaisons, which we've moved to now October. The idea that this would be effective, really, after the workshop, because people have maybe meetings this week or next week, there's not a lot of change on the external committees, a couple, but kind of rotating around all the other liaisons amongst us, so. At any rate, go see your departments, and probably at our, at our workshop, when we provide our updates on our external, it's probably the ones you already are on. The update for external, anything new would probably really happen in November, because you're not going to know much in six days. And thank you, everybody, for providing input, Madam Mayor, and reviewing, and being good liaisons to your department. It'll be sad for those that lose you.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Aye.